This Tuesday, August 8, 2023. I think we need a sound check.
Yep, just a quick Nicholas, can you hear us all right? Lovely. Can you unmute and say something so that we can test both ways?
Good afternoon.
Perfect, thank you.
Great. So Council President tonight, we have a full council. Councilor Dearing, Councilor Shon Bell, Councilor Booton, Councilor Wazazak, Councilor Stockwell, and Councilor Lozon. We're joined by City Manager Sterling Castro, Clerk Treasurer Dawes, and almost all the department heads, so I won't run through them all, but...
I'm not sure if they should be allowed to sit together in a clump.
Why is that?
I don't know.
Alright, okay. So tonight's agenda is available online and in the back of the room. This meeting has been publicly posted, is being recorded, and is subject to Vermont's open meeting law and the council's rules of procedure, which are available online. I'd like to offer a warm welcome to all of our guests joining us tonight, both here in person and online. For those joining us online, please keep in mind that the chat function should only be used for technical issues or difficulties, and to remain muted except when recognized. The city offers online access as a convenience, and we'll continue the meeting if any technical difficulties occur. Please raise your hand or signal if you would like to be recognized. And speaking of the microphone, and if you're here in the room, please come forward and sit there and speak into that microphone. That way, the audiovisual equipment can pick up your voice, and the people online can hear you. I'll call in speakers in order, allowing people who haven't spoken yet to speak first, and I'll limit time if necessary to do the city's business. If you have any questions about process or procedure, please ask, and we will get it sorted. And I want to thank everybody in advance for participating in a civil way. With that, that takes us to adjustments to the agenda. City Councilor, well, I'll start with the manager. Manager Sterling Castro.
None from me, Mayor.
City Council? Council Booton?
Yeah, I would like to add, when we're all done with everything else, discussion about the proclamation that you did last.
Discussion of proclamation as 9F?
Yep.
Got it? And I was wondering, would there be any objection to moving up the Council Booton's proposal to the consent agenda? The separation of the Cemeteries Recreation and Conservation Committee into the Cemeteries Committee and Recreation Parks Committee, with the three motions as presented. Hearing and seeing no objections, let's move that up to item H on the consent agenda. Are there any other adjustments to the agenda? Alright, hearing and seeing none. That takes us to, we have two recognitions tonight. We have Logan Cross, an Eagle Scout, who has built three Americans with Disability Act picnic tables for Courier Park. So, welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah. And would you like to tell us about your project?
Yes, I am. It's, okay, it's right here. It's my project to become an Eagle Scout.
Okay.
My project was three ADA compliant picnic tables for Courier Park, so American Disability Act. So it's got a longer end, so people who are wheelchair-bound can just slide right in and enjoy, like, the park, like Thursdays, the performances. They can also, like, eat with their family more conveniently, and just enjoy the beautiful park that we have.
Great.
Yeah. It's a long process working for my Eagle project. It's a lot of paperwork. It's like, everything in here, it's really a long... I've already put easy 50 hours plus into doing this. All the planning, all the paperwork that was required to get this far, and I'm still not done yet. It's been a great, it's been, it's been fun, also very boring at some points, but it's, it's something that I have to do. And my, my uncle, he was triple handicapped, and he was confined to a wheelchair unfortunately. But I dedicate those tables to him and in his memory, and I miss them. But I just hope that people, other people can enjoy those tables and enjoy the performances at Courier Park.
That's awesome. Thank you, thank you so much. And do you have other scouts that you're working with that are working on their Eagle Scouts?
Currently, people, some people are getting close to it, and if they ever need, like, assistance, they can talk to me. But Scouts is great, and honestly, I recommend it to anybody.
Councilors, do you have any comments, questions?
Just thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Sounds like a wonderful project.
Definitely a great, great addition. I know Councilor Lozon, last Eagle Scout award, you brought up, you asked how many of us were in the Scouts?
Yes.
And I remember, I didn't get an Eagle Scout, but I think most of us were involved in the Scouts. And I attended, I attended the Eagle Scout ceremony last year at the Masons. So it's a, it's a big, it's a huge accomplishment, big accomplishment, takes a lot of hard work. And, and it's wonderful to see that civic service and contributing to a public space like Courier Park where people gather, and to make it even more accessible for everybody. What a, what a tremendous thing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Logan.
Welcome back.
Thank you. So as you might know, I'm Jordan Bergeron, I'm the president of Berry Baseball, but also one of the coaches of this team here, along with Tyler Bradley who's here, and John Mayo who couldn't be here. Wanted to call out all the players by name as well. They're not all here, but just give them a little recognition. We got Michael Anderson, Miles Marano, Zachary Bradley, Holden Mayo, Cameron Fortier, Keegan Bergeron, Trevor Day, Callian Farnum, Levi Sherman, Keegan Myers, Evan Folsom, David Tashara, and Corbin Larrabee. As you heard, we were the eight to 10-year-old All-Star team representing Berry, and we were lucky enough to win our districts and head on up to Essex, represent Berry as District Four Champions at the state tournament, and finished in third place on the entire state there. So it's been a lot of fun. Just had a few things prepared to say about the team and what we've been through. First of all, thank you guys for recognizing us. It means a lot to be appreciated and recognized by the community that these boys have worked so hard to represent. This team has proudly worn the name on the front of their jerseys and strive to embody the qualities that it represents, especially the toughness and resiliency of Berry. For nearly three weeks straight, we practiced every evening on Cornerstone Field at Rotary Park, which we put a lot of hours in recently improving and getting that field ready to host the district tournament. And as you know, on July 11th, the historic flooding in Berry washed that field away. And it was pretty humbling to see all of our hard work, kind of just going down the river there. And literally, we're supposed to host games at night, and kind of got thrown for a loop to host the tournament, as well as continuing to prepare our team for, for our own games. So as a result, we had to host a tournament entirely on one field, and due to scheduling, it made for a real busy and grueling stretch of baseball. But these kids were more than up for the task. We recognize baseball's secondary to what so many others have gone through during this time. But for these kids, it really is their passion, their escape, and what they'd already devoted their whole summer to. So they showed the determination and grit to roll up their sleeves and give everything they had. In fact, we found it was kind of an escape for the whole community. We gained a large following through Facebook and the Times Argus coverage. And before long, we'd be out and about wearing our hats, and people would come up and greet us, and kind of give us a little congratulations, and tell us to go get them and represent. So this went a long way in fueling the passion for the team to succeed. In fact, in all, every game except our very first one, we had to battle back to overcome a deficit on the scoreboard. So much like the residents and businesses of the community, we represented, these boys never gave up, and found it within themselves to find that internal strength and resiliency to push forward and fight time and time again. When their backs were against the wall, they never backed down. And Turning Point really seemed to be when we, we lost a heartbreaker in the winner's bracket championship game. And the next day, we decided to take a day off from baseball and brought the team over to the bowling alley and spent the whole afternoon there together bowling and just having fun. And watching them come together and have fun, and come together as a team was definitely the best memories that I'll take away from it, and I hope they do too. Winning districts and finishing third in the entire state is an impressive performance for sure, but, and one that we'll never forget. But the ultimate outcome is relationships have been formed, and how this group will forever be remembered as a family. And to me, a perfect representation of this community. I'm extremely proud of all of them, and I hope you are all too. Thank you again for all of this recognition and opportunity. We appreciate it greatly.
Winning districts and finishing third in the entire state is an impressive performance for sure, but, and one that we'll never forget. But the ultimate outcome is relationships have been formed, and how this group will forever be remembered as a family. And to me, a perfect representation of this community. I'm extremely proud of all of them, and I hope you are all too. Thank you again for all of this recognition and opportunity. We appreciate it greatly.
My name's Callahan, and I play left field and first base.
Awesome.
Come on, guys, don't be shy.
Alright, there we go.
My name's Michael, I play pitcher and centerfield.
My name's Trevor, and I play right field.
My name's Michael, I play pitcher and centerfield.
My name's David, and I play right field.
Yeah, if this whole council thing doesn't work out, I get a future in sports announcing.
I got connections for you.
That sounds a lot more fun.
Alright, so next up, we have Visitors and Communications. This is an opportunity for anybody to speak to an item that is not on tonight's agenda. If you're here to speak to an item that is on tonight's agenda, well, just raise your hand when we take up that item of business. Are there any items for Visitors and Communications? Ellen Kay, welcome. And we've upgraded the seats, so. There used to be a squeaky chair there, so.
Working on it, sorry.
Well, Ellen gets ready. Does anybody, a member of council have an item of communication?
Yeah, if this whole council thing doesn't work out, I get a future in sports announcing.
My name is Zachary, and I play catcher, third base, shortstop, and pitcher.
My name's Michael, I play pitcher and centerfield.
My name's David, and I play right field.
My name's Trevor, and I play right field.
My name's Karen, and I play first base.
My name's Keegan, and I play third base.
And Keegan, your last name is Myers? That's my middle name.
You gotta get in there, Coach.
Yeah, if this whole council thing doesn't work out, I get a future in sports announcing.
I got connections for you.
That sounds a lot more fun.
Alright, so next up, we have Visitors and Communications. This is an opportunity for anybody to speak to an item that is not on tonight's agenda. If you're here to speak to an item that is on tonight's agenda, well, just raise your hand when we take up that item of business. Are there any items for Visitors and Communications? Ellen Kay, welcome. And we've upgraded the seats, so. There used to be a squeaky chair there, so. Well, Ellen gets ready. Does anybody, a member of council have an item of communication?
They're gonna want to pull the mic towards you.
Yep. My name is Ellen Kay. I live on East Street in Berry City. For four weeks now, I've had the privilege of working together with extraordinary teams of people in the wake of the flooding that has devastated our city. I'm speaking tonight to share with you and with our community the power of what happens when ordinary people work together to help their neighbors. First, I want to recognize the all-volunteer Rainbow Response Team. Under the leadership of Sean Trader, the Rainbow Bridge Community Center, our nonprofit LGBTQA support organization transformed itself into a mutual aid hub, sending response teams out into the neighborhoods and mucking basements, carrying debris to the curb, canvassing to see who needs help, providing emotional and moral support, as well as directing folks to resources for several weeks, seven days a week. It also became a pop-up distribution center, distributing donations of clothing, non-perishable food, cleaning supplies, personal items, tools, boots, diapers, animal, animal goods, and more to hundreds of people who needed it the most. Outside, there have been tables daily, matching those needing assistance with volunteers, providing hot lunches, giving information about reporting damage and filling out forms, and more. I've seen volunteers give freely of their own time, going above and beyond to help neighbors and total strangers. And last Saturday, representatives of Vermont Legal Aid were at that table, providing guidance to folks who needed it. Sean, Nick, Stevie, Siobhan, Adam, Liz, Ren, and many others, whose names I may not know, have shown us what a community can do. It's particularly poignant to me that this is a community under attack. Anti-queer, anti-trans activity is rampant these days, yet they have been in the forefront, putting aside the work of their organization in this disaster. And I will add, they have done it all with no bathroom and no power still in their space. At the same time, a handful of women have coordinated a weekly volunteer mobilization outside the Aldrich Library, which generously made it possible for us to be there. With data and tables provided by the city, we dispatched hundreds of volunteers. The first day, there were 400 people who came and went out to do volunteer tasks. These people helped our neighbors around the city. Amanda Guston, Pamela Wilson, Michelle Donnelly, Becky Wig, Renita Marshall, Haley Perro, Danielle Alzarsky, and others have risen to the occasion, lending their leadership skills, expertise, and time, trying to make sure nobody falls through the cracks. Our state representatives Jonathan Williams and Peter Anthony, as well as Mayor Jake Hemric, Councilors Mel Shon Bell and Sam Stockwell have all participated in those Saturday mobilizations. And this last Saturday, our mayor was part of a crew who loaded DPW trucks with debris for four hours, and I've seen him every Saturday since the flood, helping out neighbors and small businesses. We've got a long road ahead, and I hope we can transition from the acute phase to helping folks get the aid and resources they need, particularly for tenants, finding houses for, housing for those displaced, and continuing to work together. Thank you.
Thank you for your statement. Are there any other items for Visitors and Communication? Hearing and seeing none. That takes us to our consent agenda. So we have quite a bit on the consent agenda. We have approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting on Tuesday, July 25, 2023. We have the city warrants from the week of August 2, 2023, as well as the week of August 9, 2023. Well, there's ratification of the first, approval of the second. Clerk Treasurer Dawes, do we have any offices, licenses, and permits?
We do have one. We have an entertainment license application in front of us from Pearl Street Pizza to host a Beer Garden Flood Fundraiser on August 19th in the Pearl Street Pedway. So that is included in the consent agenda.
And as item D, we have an acknowledgment of the 2023 reappraisal order from Property Valuation Review with a detailed memo from, I'm sorry, Acting Interim Assessor Janet Shadney. Then we have the acceptance of the resignation of City Attorney Twombly, and appointment of Stitzel Page and Fletcher as the city's attorney with David Rose, the primary firm contact, who we interviewed as part of the earlier process. We have a change of the name of the Diversity and Equity Committee to Justice, Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Committee. And we have authorization for the manager to execute a contract with DeFrain Group for the Merchant Street Maple Avenue reconstruction. Oh yeah, and thank you, yeah. And the one I asked to move up, the separation of the Cemeteries Recreation and Conservation Committee into a Cemeteries Committee and Recreation and Parks Committee, as presented with the recommended motions by Councilor Booton. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Councilor Shon Bell, second by Councilor Booton. Any discussion?
I just want to clarify for those that did show up for the separation. I'm assuming you, Kat, did you show up for the separation? And I know Giuliano Cecchinelli did too, so I don't know if they want to say anything about it, but it's gonna pass.
If it's on the consent agenda, I think we're poised to approve. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, the motion carries, the consent agenda is adopted. That takes us to item six on the agenda, the City Clerk and Treasurer Report.
Just a couple things, that's the reappraisal order. Just a couple things, we have been, we've had a number of people who have stopped by the office to make donations for flood recovery. And we've collected just under $2,000 at this point in time. This is in addition to the $5,000 worth of store credit that Walmart has donated to us, and in addition to the donations that are being accepted through the GoFundMe account. The other thing is that we received our most recent opioid settlement funds. To date, we've received a little over $51,000. Council will recall that you have allocated $40,000 in support of Turning Point at this point in time, and we have additional funding. The projection total is just under $156,000 to be spread out between now and July of 2038, so over the next 15 years. But, so we've received about a third of it to date, so, and that's all I have.
Are there any questions for the Clerk Treasurer? Alright, hearing and seeing none. That takes us to the Liquor Cannabis Control Board.
I do have one item. This is associated with the Beer Garden Flood Fundraiser that's being held by Pearl Street Pizza in the Pearl Street Pedway. They have an outside consumption permit that covers a small portion of the Pedway. They have applied to expand that into more of the Pedway and around the corner to the front of their building during the event. They met with the police chief to talk about the area and boundaries, and they're gonna be doing wristbands and ways to identify customers, and to maintain the flow of pedestrians through the Pedway during the event. And so what requires liquor control approval is the expansion of their outside consumption permit for that day, the 19th of August.
Alright, so there's a proposal to expand the permit for the 19th of August. Is there any, is there a motion? Motion by Councilor Stockwell, second by Councilor Wazazak. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, with one abstention noted. That takes us to item eight, the City Manager's report. Manager Sterling Castro.
Hey Mayor, thank you. Not too much. Most of the work has focused on the flood recovery, which we'll talk about later. Just two items of note, not on the flood recovery. We did finalize the merger of the Yeastman property with the Cow pasture. So all that has been done legally, and it should be reflected shortly in our GIS map. And we also did receive, I was looking up the grantor, but we did receive the sunscreen dispenser grant that the council approved an application for earlier this spring, and that is now at the city pool. So two, two positive notes. Most everything else focused on flood recovery that we'll talk about later in the meeting.
Are there questions for the City Manager? Council Dearing?
Is the sunscreen grant gonna cover anything for next year?
We get to keep the dispenser, we just have to buy the sunscreen moving forward.
If there are no other questions, that'll take us on to our first item of new business, which is revision of the property tax due dates for FY '24, as presented by Clerk Dawes.
Yes. I included a memo in the packet, but I felt that it was important to actually do this in open session. We have been fielding a lot of questions in our office about when people can expect their tax bills. Our traditional first due date is August 15, so a lot of people are thinking that's coming right up. And so we want to get the word out. I've put stuff on Front Porch Forum, it's on the city website. Because of the added work in, on all staff associated with the flood, we're running a little bit further behind in getting the grand list finalized. We expect that to be completed the early part of next week. I will likely ask you all to have a special meeting, a brief special meeting next week, probably Tuesday, just to approve the tax rates. Our plan is to actually create the file to, for the tax bills on Thursday. file for the tax bills on Thursday, and then they'll go in the mail the following week. So the revised timeline is that they'll be in the mail by the end of this month. And so because they require a 30-day period of time between when they get mailed and when they're due, that would push the first due date. I had included in my memo that the first due date would be September, actually, I see I did that wrong.
Yeah, sentence above.
Right. I added that September 30th is the first due date. The other due dates for the year would remain the same. However, when I looked at the calendar the other day, September 30th is a Saturday. So the actual first due date, the way the law reads is that if a due date falls on a weekend or a holiday, it goes to the next business day. So the actual first due date will be October 2nd.
Ten to.
Yep, ten to. And then the other dates would be, as usual, November 15, February 15, and May 15. So that's what I'm asking, calendar to, calendar, council to approve is the revised dates, October 2, and then November 15, February 15, May 15 for this tax year.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Question by Counselor Derry, second by Counselor Shombel. Are there further discussion just on the approval of the tax rate? Is that something we could do just as a Zoom meeting next Tuesday? Or do you want us to come in here and do it?
No, we can do it as a Zoom meeting.
Okay.
I believe counsel...
Counsel Lozon?
Just had a question regarding the November 15th, '23 due date. Did you consider pushing that out thirty days?
I didn't. I know that it seems close, but it's far on the other end. It's, you know.
No, it's normal. Normally, we'd be writing our checks on August 15th. And I get it, but in light of what a lot of people are going through, I just didn't know if it would be helpful. I think most folks would still observe the November 15th date.
That's why I thought that it's...
Where we waive penalties or something.
I thought it made, well, we're going to, one of the things that I'm doing is I am drafting up a memo to go in with the tax bills that talks about the abatement process, that explains to people why their tax bills will be based on the assessment, the value of their property pre-flood, and what their options are if they have had experienced flood damage to their property. I think maintaining the consistency for the rest of the tax year, people will find that valuable, to be able to have that consistency. I mean, people are, you know, they're calling me because my phone dinged and told me I have to pay my taxes now. So I think that they will find comfort in being able to be back on the regular schedule.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on post-pun? So we have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we should plan for a meeting next Tuesday, maybe at 5:30?
Yes. And what we'll probably do is we'll do the, you know, we'll do the consent agenda. We'll approve the tax rates. I will send those calculations out in advance so that people who like to do math, Counselor Lozon, can run the numbers.
There's a reason why. One year, we came dangerously close to tanking the entire city budget.
It's something that keeps me up at night is making sure the math is correct. So, yeah.
Mayor, if I may, for the 15th, I know there's something perhaps happening with a legislative committee. Is that going to conflict at that time, or?
Oh, yeah, that's right. It's, I think that's going to be, I think it's going to be in the morning. I think it should be wrapped up by then.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, just as background for counsel, the Senate Economic Development Committee and potentially the House Committee on Economic Development, Commerce and Economic Development, might be having a joint hearing just to discuss flood impacts and potential legislation either for a, I think there's going to be an impeachment session for a sheriff in Franklin County, but also potentially for the January session too. So they're trying to get a handle on flood impacts. So there's going to be, I think, a full day of testimony on Tuesday, August 15th.
Right.
Excuse me a moment. This fan is extremely loud, so if you all could speak louder.
Sure.
Can we turn it down? Yeah, we're going to turn it down. Janet's going to look at it.
And I'm always curious how close the tax rate is to what was predicted, so.
And that, no, I think it's the air purifier, Janet.
You can turn that right off.
Oh, just shut that right off, yeah.
All right.
This will help you.
So the next item up on the agenda is to act on the pending ARPA Community Innovation Fund awards. Manager Sterling Castro?
Thanks, Mayor. And Counsel, you have a memo in the packet. I know you're all very familiar with these applicants and this process we've gone through. And we were scheduled to act on these, council was scheduled to act on these at the July 11th meeting, which was, of course, canceled. And I'm bringing these to you really, I think the applicants deserve sort of some sort of finality. I understand that our situation has changed dramatically since we were expected to vote on these on July 11th. But I think I've heard from applicants wondering what the status of these awards are. And I think one way or the other, it would be behoove both the city and the applicants to have some understanding of where these stand. So I, you know, there's really three paths forward. Counsel can choose to award some funds. Counsel can choose to postpone to a date certain, but even having a date certain, I think, will help applicants because some of these projects are parts of larger, some of the requests we have are parts of larger projects that people have going on. And this ARPA money that we have put out there is a match for that, or the other options to just cancel the program in its entirety. But I think, I think the applicants deserve some sort of answer and understanding of what the process is because, as I said, for some of them, we're just a match, and they don't need to go elsewhere. They've all put a lot of time into this, so I think they deserve sort of a real clear understanding of what the road ahead lies. So I'm presenting this to you, Counsel. I don't know if it needs to be a discussion item or if a decision, if there's consensus on a decision. But I think there needs to be something definitive. We can tell the applicants that they still have pending applications.
And what we're talking about here is $174,000 and some change.
Right. Yeah, we've had, since this was last on the agenda, the Berry Senior Center, which was requesting $4,875, notified me that they have identified alternative funding, so they withdrew their application for ARPA funding. And that, yes, dropped the amount of possible awards down to 174, 252, assuming counsel awards all of them in full.
Counsel Wazazak has his hand raised, but before that, I just want to clarify that you're recommending three pathways, either the counsel proceed with awards, that we postpone to a date certain, or cancel the program. And I would suggest that we maybe answer the first question, do we want to proceed with awards? But Counsel Wazazak?
Yeah, so I don't know if there's consensus. But what I, I think that, in light of everything, if we were to give, let's say, we were supposed to give around $30,000, according to the table, to the old Labor Hall. I think if we gave them $30,000 right now, they may use it on other things besides a lift upgrade or media facility. And, you know, same thing with SPA got hit really bad. I know Circle got hit. So I would still like to see this money get into the community, but I think that we could do, sorry, friends, I think we could do some sort of other administrative process, downtown recovery grants, for example. A lot of businesses aren't eligible for FEMA. They have to go through SBA, and even then that's low-interest loans, right? So I think that there is ways that we can still get this money into the community and give it directly to downtown businesses, nonprofits, maybe residents, I don't know. I haven't thought that far ahead. But it doesn't feel right to continue with some of these projects in light of the millions and millions and millions of dollars of damages throughout downtown. So that's kind of where my head's at.
I will say that the Labor Hall is still looking to do the elevator, which was damaged by the flood.
Right, right.
And media equipment. I haven't spoken with all the organizations. Counselor Stockwell, and then it looks like Counsel Lozon?
I did ask the city manager if the old Labor Hall and Circle were still interested in, and he said that, yes, they're both still interested. So I think, in light of how we've stretched this out, I do think we should make decisions, and to make people go through another process seems to me unfair. And there are certainly things here that I would not wish to fund, but there are things here that I think would support the downtown, and I would happily fund. So if we do this process and we decide to award funds, I would like to go item by item.
Counsel Lozon?
Yes, I'd like to postpone. The date I'm thinking of is April 1st, 2024. I think as the city manager and Brian could attest, you know, I'm concerned that the city's going to be chasing flood-related problems such as infrastructure issues, you know, failing pipes, failing storm systems for quite a long time. I wouldn't be in favor, you know, the Labor Hall is certainly going to have needs. They were hit hard, just as many other organizations and businesses will have needs. So what I'd be comfortable doing is, and I'm not sure mechanically, maybe Dawn, you could answer it, could we push this money into the general fund with a vote? Because there is the clock ticking on the ARPA funds, so I just want to make sure we stay on the right side of statute. So would it be best to push it?
Push something to a vote?
No, no, push it to the general fund. In other words, the ARPA funds are ticking, but if the city council votes that we've declared $10 million in damages, we can actually shelter these funds within the general fund, not having to worry about, and don't worry, this isn't a ploy to give it back to the taxpayers, but we can get it in the general fund without worrying about the ARPA clock ticking. And then in April of next year, I hope the city isn't going to have, you know, have too much unanticipated expenses, and we could just revive the program. And I'd have no issue voting item by item. But I think, you know, they all went through a process, and I think to say, well, you know, let's award these folks the money, but let's wait on everybody else. It just doesn't feel good to me. And awarding any funds in the immediate future doesn't feel good at all to me, when I don't really know the impact on individuals, I don't know the impact on businesses, and I don't know the impact on the city. So that's what I'd like to do, is push it off until April 24th, the earliest.
This is going to be fun to land. So we have one to build a new process, one to go ahead and award, one to postpone. What's happening over here?
Yeah, I don't have a problem pushing it off. I just, I think of, you know, the buyout process that we had, you know, 10 years ago now, and how long that took. And that took us, what, a year, two years?
Three.
Three years.
It was three years.
Took a long time. I think that the effects of the flood are just too uncertain at this moment to make any decision on this money. As for awarding it, I would, personally, I would end the program. But out of deference to, you know, Counselor Lozon, I wouldn't have a problem waiting until April 1st, but...
Yeah. And not to interrupt, I don't know that on April 1st, we wouldn't vote, or prior to April 1st, we wouldn't vote to end the program.
Yeah.
I'm just saying that I don't see, I don't see the smoke clearing for six months or so.
No, you're right.
Counsel Shombel?
I agree with the idea of postponing. I don't like the idea of money to some and not to others at a time that everybody's, so many things are so unpredictable at this time. I don't think we even have an idea of how deep the bill is going to be in any direction. And I, as much as I'd like to see some of this get funded, I just, I just worry that we could be, it's not a huge amount of money, but it's money that could be going to other things.
I personally am along the same lines of holding off with spending any of these funds, that we have a community that's really reaming from a huge disaster and a tragedy, and people who still don't have any idea what's going on. And for us to make some decisions about spending close to $200,000, I think is potentially even irresponsible for us and not meeting the needs of our residents. So I'd definitely like to go along the lines of Counselor Lozon and go in the middle ground of not canceling the program and not awarding funds either, and making sure that we're on stable ground when we do make these decisions.
All right. So what I'm hearing is for, in favor of postponement, Counsel Wazazak?
I would also like it if, and, you know, I heard that there have been conversations already, but, you know, if these folks want to adjust any of their proposal, for lack of a better term, in the meantime, to more, just in reflection of the flood, you know, you are eligible for this much if you want to change how you're going to tell us you're going to use it because of the flood.
Referring to the Labor Hall, Ted?
Well, I mean, any of them, really. Like, you know, if SPA, you know, downtown could definitely use some more art, especially after the past couple of weeks. But like, if they want to use it for, to help repair their furnace or something.
I, yeah, we can have that. I'd struggle with that.
You know, I'd be, I'm open to postponement, but I'm wondering if we couldn't move this up as to part of our budget conversations. And I'd be cautious about reopening and building a new process, because I think we're going to get a lot of requests, and we, these participants have gone through the process we've set up. It's been very prolonged. They've been very patient, but it does feel like we are in a, you know, post-flood state. And if there are adjustments related to flood impacts, I'd be interested in hearing about those and doing it during our budget conversations.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. And I would agree that, you know, building a new process would just be, it would just be very difficult. And, you know, these folks did work very hard. As the manager said, they all worked very hard. And I do, I apologize that I can't give them more certainty. They have no issue with having the discussion, you know, starting the discussion during budget time, and then deciding, okay, are we going to continue with April or not? You know, and I apologize, but a lot of things are, a lot of things are uncertain right now.
Yeah. So it sounds like, if there's no objection, it sounds like the council, there's a majority in the council to be open to postponing and taking this up as part of the budget discussion for community investment. Before we vote, I see hand trays.
I just have a clarifying question. I heard somebody say the ARPA clock is ticking, so maybe I just don't understand the process. But then I'm hearing we're going to postpone till April. So what, have those two things?
So there is a deadline to obligate the funds, which is December 31st, 2024. However, Counsel Lozon pointed out, under the treasury rules, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dawn, that if it is moved, absorbed into the general fund, that it's then considered obligated at that point. So then it would need to be designated within the general fund for those purposes.
And it has to be expended by '26.
Expended by '26. Okay, Ellen?
Yeah, so...
Oh, and I forgot to say, you kind of come to my, I forgot, I always forget, so.
I'm Kat Allen. I live on Hilltop Avenue in Berry City. So a question that I have, one, are there any restrictions with ARPA funds receiving interest, or is the general fund a non-interest-bearing account since it's federal grant money?
It is allowed to earn interest and is.
Okay. And then my second question is, for the organizations that kind of were expecting this money, that are now really in dire straits, does the council have other suggestions as to where organizations like the Labor Hall could get a relatively quick $30,000 check? And I am very passionate about the Labor Hall. I've been there multiple times a week since the flood in mud and water, and just seeing it, like, stripped down to the studs. to the studs. I mean, our, it's like a local treasure, right? So it, it hurts to not be able to support them in some kind of way as like a very solid part of Berry's history. And so what, what does the council recommend potentially for them? Since this is potentially funds that may be not advisable, may have been put on their receivables as expected income for the fiscal year or even last fiscal year.
Well, I could take a stab at that. I mean, there, first of all, ACCD, if you go to the AC, sorry, Agency of Commerce and Community Development webpage, there is a grant program that businesses and nonprofits are eligible for. So, you know, there's certain guidelines, but you said, well, where could they replace? I believe that's up to twenty thousand dollars, that particular award. In addition, there are a number of flood recovery funds, charitable funds that are available. And as I look at the, and I'm picking up on something the mayor said, he talked about the lift upgrade and he said he understood that their lift was actually damaged in the flood and may need replacing.
Yep.
So it's not a lift upgrade anymore. It's, it's a lift replacement. And and lastly, because the council hadn't voted on that, on this, there certainly is expectation. And like I said, you know, I apologize for that. I wish the city didn't flood, but it did and we faced a lot of uncertainty. And I just wouldn't feel good about, you know, awarding two hundred thousand dollars for a ball field lighting project when some people don't have a place to live. So, you know, again, it's not placing, and I just won't place one organization because they all went through the same process in good faith. So who knows? Maybe we have a discussion during budget time and we decide to scrap this program and we do come up with a new one. You know, I, I just don't know.
So that would be a redesign of how the ARPA funds would be distributed throughout the community? Scrap the program, it's, we now have a pool of money and then create a new program for people to apply for the funding?
I don't know. Or the city, or the city. I mean, you know, the city itself is facing a lot of uncertainty. The clerk certainly anticipates a lot of abatement requests, partial.
So you're thinking the general fund allocation would absorb some of the city's loss?
I could easily see our general fund taking a million dollar hit that we don't have in, through the flood. And I mean, our property tax collections on an annual basis, Carol?
My property taxes just went up.
Fourteen, fifteen?
Yeah, so fourteen, fifteen million. So, you know, do the math, if twenty percent of the stock in the city is, it's a big number. So there's just, there's just so much uncertainty. I don't know, I can't tell you what the discussion is going to be in January. I hope the discussion isn't talking about a seven-figure deficit in the city's general fund, but it very well could. And if that's the case, I would have a hard time taking this two hundred thousand dollars and funding any program. I would take the two hundred thousand dollars and bring that deficit from seven figures down to eight hundred thousand. So, you know, I do apologize because I know how much work people put into it.
For the community to have a lengthier explanation about what putting something in the general fund and what that reallocation could look like.
Sure.
And just to be clear, though, the postponement here is not a rewriting of the
No, not at all.
We would take this up, this same
It's a, we don't know.
Set of applications at budget time based on a little bit better information. And I'll just ask the funding director, the clerk treasurer, do you have any very general ballpark estimates of what the general fund could be? And, no, it's too early to say. Yeah, alright, okay.
That's the problem.
Just as a parting comment, then, hopefully my last of the evening. As someone who's passionate about clear communication, will the, will the city be sending out a letter to the applicants that explains the decision and then what the tentative new plan is so that everybody is equally aware if they didn't attend tonight's session?
The manager nodded his head.
Yeah, that's, the idea of this meeting was to get clarity that, so that we could communicate with them. So yeah, absolutely. We've been, we've been in touch with them at every step of the process and we'll, we'll let them know after tonight that this, this delay that's, that's happening.
Thank you all.
So unless somebody wants to formalize the motion, if there's no objections, then I would take the council's will to be to postpone to the budget that when we take up the budget, in which may be in the fall or January, and make, make decisions at that point with this set of applications we have now.
Show move.
Second.
The motion in a second and to communicate with the applicants the status of everything that's happened. So we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Alright, hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
The ayes have it, motion carries. Now we have the set the water and sewer rates for FY twenty-four.
Thanks, Mayor. Counsel on the packet, we included a memo and a resolution for the new water sewer rates for the, for the year. What approach, our approach here was to try to keep the percentage changes static in a way. Our water fund is performing better than our sewer fund and so we, we decreased last year's base and usage rate on water by one percent and increased last year's sewer base and use rate by one percent each so that we could do two things. One is to make sure that our water fund, while, while performing better, continues to be that way. We don't want to build a hole there. And, and two, try to play some catch-up on the sewer side, which has been in, in deeper trouble. So that was our approach this year. We, you can see in the memo there that if you look at the, the total typical increase for an average user of the system is less than, is about almost exactly a hundred fifty dollars a year. So not trying to say that that's nothing, but it's trying to keep it manageable and trying to be responsive to the needs of our water and sewer systems that are quite integral to, to our city. So, and have many accumulated needs as well to address. So unless Assistant City Manager Monahan or Public Works Director Baker have anything to add, that's the, the top line here on this proposal for you for, for this year.
So just to walk us through the details of where the bud, the, the funds are right now. We have a water fund, we have a sewer fund. Both of them have operational budgets and capital budgets. There's a capital balance for both funds. The sewer fund capital balance has been lagging, but we're, we're making investments at about a rate of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year on the sewer side, is that right? Okay. And, and so the, the wastewater improvements that are scheduled in the capital plan for next, next year, are those in flux based on where, where everything is right now? Okay. But again, this is the last, is this the last and final year of the twenty percent?
No, this was, last year was, Mayor.
Three-year program?
Yeah.
Okay.
That, last year was the last year. So this is a new cycle of that. Last year was the last year of that plan, twenty percent rate increase.
Any questions from council?
I have one. How does Berry Town fit into that? Did we pass that on to Berry Town also?
Yeah, any, well, the ratepayers and manager, you try and answer this. The ratepayers in Berry Town.
Yeah, yeah, the, the, it's basically, it's essentially the same rate across the municipalities.
And those water sewer agreements haven't been renegotiated at this time, but is that something? Are we, is, does, is the capital budget gonna fund anything related to studies to make sure that we have an equitable rate system in the next year?
We've, we've started some work along that line. It's gonna take, it's gonna obviously take us to reference, Mayor, like an actual detailed study. And I know Billy Hern had started some of this work before his retirement. But that's, that's, that's in our plan, that, that's in our, our operational plan as something to, to look forward, to look to in the, in the near to medium term.
Well, I think if, you know, the council's gonna approve a twenty percent increase, at least for me, I would like to know, you know, exactly what that's gonna purchase, at least on the capital side. And I recognize that there's a flood, but we really need to level up and I think build more equity into the water sewer rates across municipalities and, and it costs geospatial development patterns because low-density sprawl development is more expensive to serve than compact smart growth settlement in downtowns, which tend to be net positive. So, I mean, I, it would be an absolute priority for me to see funding in that. And I don't know what the state of our geospatial digitization, GIS mapping of our systems is, but I think if, if we still have paper documents that the public works director is gonna have, has to leave through to find out how big is the pipe, what kind of pipe is it? Where is it? What's our system look like? That would, I mean, that's, to me, I think, also the number one priority that I would want to see in a capital, a capital investment. But, but to ask for twenty, twenty percent without without a clear list of things that it's gonna pay for, I recognize that there's tremendous needs. It just gives me a real pause.
Yeah, and I, and I think Public Works Director Baker can speak to it a little bit. I know he's been demoing some of that exact type of technology you've been speaking to. These are, you know, bringing the system up into the twenty-first centuries is a major priority. I don't know, Brian, if, if you're able to share anymore, but I know this is something we talk about, not just for water sewer, but for streets. We've been making progress on, on demos to, to move in this direction. So I mean, these are shared priorities, absolutely. They are.
And like, like you said, it is a priority. I actually have GPS equipment in my office that we are demoing from the survey salesman, which we haven't had time to open the box yet. But that is the same type of thing is to, to update the systems to a GIS format and, and work it ahead. But it's in progress. But I will say that we do have a contract with the consultant doing the evaluation of the wastewater plant to do a rate study evaluation for us now. There it's ongoing. So that is moving ahead on that front.
Council Stockwell?
So I know that some municipalities do have a inclining block of rates and some have, have tiered rates so that, you know, outside customers like Berry Town pay a higher rate than, than inside customers. So is that something? But I don't know like which systems that works well for. And the other thing, so that's one question. My other question is that when we were touring the wastewater plant, they were talking about some things that would make that system better and more efficient. And I don't know if that's in the capital plan or, or if these rate changes will help make that, those changes possible. Or if you can do it through grants?
Well, we are, have, currently we have a consultant doing a twenty-year evaluation on the wastewater plant. And we had the thirty percent review probably a month ago now, and one common phrase in it was that all the systems had lived their useful life. So I can expect when we get the final report, it will be a major upgrade for that wastewater plant. In your time, you know, I'm, I'm anticipating it's probably gonna be in the twenty million dollar recommendation. We might be able to pare that down and we, we've mentioned to the consultant to try to do it in phases so we can do a plan and move ahead. But I'm, I'm anticipating it will be a big upgrade that is recommended for the wastewater plant. So these rates are definitely needed to, to, to fill that void.
And tiered rates or an inclining block?
That's actually one thing that the, the consultant will, will review. And they're actually, they've got the information from Berry Town and they will be recommending new rate structure with, with Berry Town for that also.
Boy, if we're looking at twenty, you know, twenty million dollar upgrades, recognizing that there might be some total subsidy, right? Yeah.
With the way, the prices of the process down there will be fairly steep.
It might be in the connection fees. Were there, are there any, what, what's proposed for the connection fees here?
Two thousand, two thousand for sewer, two thousand for water?
Yeah, I think those, those are staying consistent with what they are currently.
Okay. I, I'm asking that because I'm wondering about if, you know, maybe there might need to be an impact fee discussion at some point. And the impact fee statute, and I say this with Representative Anthony here in the room, only can be assessed to the municipality within which it occurs, but yet we have ratepayers in other municipalities. But we could use impact fees for new development to fund capital investments. That could be one vehicle, but the connection fee is another vehicle to offset some of those potentially. Are any of the connection fees segregated for capital uses or are they all operational? Are the, are the connection fees, do they, are they put in for capital investments or are they operational? Okay. Representative Anthony?
Happily being drawn into this, the slipper is in stormwater for which there's no rate, no revenue, lots of costs.
I'll say.
Council Lozon?
So, yes, so to answer your question, yes. The court standard is Rutland Town v. Rutland City. City of Rutland was sued by the town of Rutland because they proposed a different rate structure, a higher rate structure for those in the town. Court sided with Rutland City saying, yes, of course, a municipality who has paid for all of the infrastructure is entitled to a, in, in the short version, is entitled to a reasonable return. That said, I think we're currently governed by a water agreement, the city and town of Berry. And I keep meaning to ask for that, Nick, this Nicholas, could you send that to me sometime? Because I do want to, I, I've been meaning to ask you for that for a year. I keep forgetting because as I recall, there is a significant lead time if the city is going to change its rates. So that may be, it may be an appropriate time to have that discussion. And I absolutely agree with your analysis regarding stormwater. It all came from somewhere.
And there's no differential between commercial usage, commercial industrial uses and residential usage? And no breaks for homestead properties or?
Not currently.
Okay, but that would take a bigger study, look, analysis.
Not aware of any municipality that does that, that has a different rate structure for commercial versus?
I think there are.
Yeah, there are.
There are.
You can see it on the UNC dashboard. It tells you what kind of system people have, what kind of rate structure they have, and it can compare it across towns.
Which dashboard? I'm sorry.
University of North Carolina has a utility dashboard, which is really great. It has some wonderful information about rate setting and different kinds of systems.
For Vermont?
For the whole country, yeah.
Several states, yeah.
Alright, so there's a proposal for four percent, four percent for water and then
No, no, ma'am.
I, I don't have it in front of me.
I would move to approve the increases as presented.
Three percent base rate to water, three percent use rate to water, five percent base rate to sewer, twenty percent use rate to sewer.
Twenty-one percent.
Twenty-one percent, thank you. So there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second out.
Second by Council Dearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I'm a no. Motion carries. The rates are set.
I'm going to send the signature page for the resolution around for those who voted in favor.
So that takes us to the flood recovery update and we have a PowerPoint presentation.
Yep, thank you.
One second.
Alright, thank you. So next, yeah, first slide, please. So thank you, council. Just want to run you through some of the things that happened since we last met in terms of the public and public property and street damage. We're making progress. City Hall, Public Safety Building have been completed in terms of their treatment. The next step for those two buildings is, is to bid on running Uh the next step for those two buildings is uh is to bid on renovations uh and repairs. You can see there. Um flooding in the City Hall Boiler Room uh in the picture. Uh the Wheelock Basement has been cleared and is being in the process of being treated. Uh Jeff uh met with Preservation Trust of Vermont uh in the building last week and. Um there may be uh opportunities for funding assistance for for those repairs, but that basement has been uh cleared since we last met. Um North Main Street, I just got uh the the latest update as I know it was it was finalized today. Uh so uh big kudos to all the crews that worked on that. Thank you, Counselor Lozum uh for helping us expedite that. Um the repaving, as you all know, began last week, it stretched into this week uh due to the weather, but it has been uh completed, so that is a a big step forward. Uh and then some of these, you already know, Wes Patterson uh closed indefinitely. Uh as I've mentioned, we're gonna look at the pedestrian access, but that is not gonna open to vehicle traffic uh anytime soon. Um Pike Street uh is closed between Howard and George Street, and that is also indefinite. Um we've engaged experts looking at the landslide that's threatening that area. Um and Berlin Street uh from uh Smith to North Main, uh including the bridge is closed as well. Um and that's awaiting a a further assessment of the safety of the bridge. Uh once that's deemed safe, we would be able to reopen uh that stretch of road. Um there's also just sort of, I hate to call it isolated, but but streets that are still open. Um that are in need of flood-related um damage repair. Um such as Cliff Street uh in Washington Street, um we will be um issuing a a reb- uh a new bid for paving for flood-related damage. Uh which we were advised is necessary to maximize our chances for FEMA reimbursement. Uh next slide please. So uh that was public property uh in streets. The next update is on flood-related debris pickup. Um the city transitioned on July twenty fifth to the state's uh debris contractor um for pickup. Uh they've done some terrific work. Uh these contractors prioritize the uh eight hardest hit zones. You can see the zones there in the map. On the right, um those are the areas. So if you're reaching out to the city and saying, hey, why is my debris not being picked up? It's because the contractor has been focused on those areas right there um that really got hit the hardest. Uh not to say people in that white space didn't get hit hard, these are just the hardest. And so that's where they've been, they're gonna start fanning out. Um and and collecting debris wherever those those trucks can fit. Um FEMA authorized uh one pass for commercial debris and that ended last Friday, so moving forward. Um commercial debris uh must be removed by the owner, uh cannot be piled up um for pickup because that is no longer authorized. Um and the second residential pass started yesterday, will continue through this week. Uh and a third pass, if necessary, uh will continue after that. Uh so I just want to remind residents who may be listening or uh counselors, in case residents reach out to you. Um the place to put flood-related debris is not on the sidewalk, not on the street. But on the edge of the property where the hauler can grab it uh from its place on the street. Uh so that's what we need people to do. Um so that we can uh have send a contractor around to uh to grab that debris. Uh next slide please.
Before we move on from there, Nicholas. About the second and third residential passes, are those additional passes of the eight zones? Or are they starting to do passes of the what I'll call the white areas?
It's it's a little both, counselor, so uh they're gonna, the eight zones um. Had some follow-up debris, I guess, for lack of a better term, um so they'll be focusing there, but the the passes will start to fan out. Um to the uh the white areas on the map. Yep. And 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 I should mention that one of the things we've done is. Uh on the volunteer, uh when we've sent around volunteers on the weekends to do debris hauling, we've tried to concentrate them in the white areas. So that we can, you know, check off certain streets and and have them finalized, so. Um where we can, we're trying to get to those um those one offs um just to take care of them. Uh and there are also streets where the 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 haulers just physically cannot cannot enter. Alright, next slide. Uh we also have a household hazardous waste drop off at the auditorium that'll be there for about two weeks. Um and so Berry residents, please come drop off um house- household hazardous waste. You see the list there. Of all the uh eligible items that you can come and sort uh and drop off at the auditorium. Um and so we prefer people to drop this off. Uh if residents physically cannot drop it off. Um it's be great to have it sorted with your other debris, and that's another activity for which we'll send out volunteers. Um when we can um to do those pickups and to drop them off here at this uh location. So if you're uh watching from home, just make sure you drive to that big blue X uh in the auditorium. Uh it doesn't look like that anymore on the picture on the right because people have started to drop things off. Um so come, drop off your materials, sort them, there's very helpful signs for where to put um the things you are dropping off. Next slide please. Uh so landslide, this continues to be the uh probably the most active work stream. Um and unfortunately, the one that we still don't have the the answers we want for. So as I've mentioned, there's about twenty identified landslides in the city uh related to the flood. Um some are more serious than others. Um and you can see this here is Portland Street. Um which is uh threatening the, it's in the right of way and it's threatening the street, so we're we're in. Uh moving on this one to try to do a a demolition. This one is is one of the high priority areas because of its risk to the street there. We've reported this to insurance, there's no sense, there's no reason to believe that insurance will cover any of it. Um we're speaking with legal counsel. And there's just not much legal precedent or statute in Vermont uh to provide it clear answers for us. Um generally speaking. We've been told we could expect some sort of immunity, but the legal landscape is still pretty unclear. Um we have been spent uh really focused on this, uh city representatives, uh myself and several staff. Visited the highest priority landslides last week, um and FEMA has also been taking this extremely seriously. They've they've dedicated resources. To it as well. Um so FEMA, Army Corps of Engineers, the state geologist from DEC. Uh and experts that were brought in from Pen- the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation spent about half a day. Uh at the six or seven highest priority landslides. Um I think the the, you know, the positive news, to the extent there is any, is that they, there's there's paths towards mitigation, what we need. Uh and we have a contract um pending with a geotechnical specialist that we're starting to engage later this week, thankfully. Um is we just need what those mitigation plans are. Um and so um we are, this has been a slower moving process. Just because it's um it's been rela- it's been new to all of us here on the staff, uh and and frankly, it was. Much more challenging for for many of the other people in the state who could have otherwise assisted us, so. Um we're thankful for FEMA um and the Army Corps of Engineers, it was great to to have experts looking at this. Um and we're looking forward to uh after uh our engagement with a geotechnical specialist uh begins at the end of this week. Starting to really tackle these uh six, seven highest priority um loca- uh locations uh affected by by landslides. Um and like I said, that next step will be to receive those assessments and and move forward with um mitigation plans. To to make sure those areas are safe. Uh next slide please. Um so we've uh the assessments to damage of residential homes uh was kicked off the last week of July. In in earnest um with some some uh door-to-door assessments conducted by Janet, uh Michelle, Joe. Uh and some um assistants, uh that they had assistance from A and R uh and Florida experts as well. Uh to do the um the substantial damage determination, that's a FEMA term of art. Um there's, they've identified about approximately a hundred ten properties uh with significant damage. Caused by the flooding, um and those are primarily centered uh on the north end, of course. Um so that's that's our assessment at this point. This will continue to um evolve as we get more information. Uh as you can see there, um the results from those visits that Janet participated in are still pending and not yet returned to the city. Um but this really um is consistent with with the uh what we had sort of been projecting. Um we're we're, of course, trying to get more granular uh data, but obviously a a very significant impact, uh very focused on the north end. Um permit applications are starting to uh come in as well to uh the permitting office. Um so in addition to um other required permits, uh permits, I want to re- remind residents that if they're doing any kind of repair work. Um it must get a flood hazard permit uh if the property is in the flood plain, so remember that. Um and um the council uh waived right after the flood the fees for these permits, but residents still. Um have to go through the permitting um process. Uh so far, Janet's issued one flood hazard permit uh related to the July twenty twenty-three flood. Um and multiple are pending, uh they they must be reviewed by the state before we can we can issue them. Uh next slide.
Sorry, Nicholas, um do we have ballpark of how many housing units that hundred and ten properties represents?
Uh I'm gonna turn to Janet and Joe in the room if they have a a better uh an an estimate on the units themselves.
Just a, just as a follow-up though, is there um any timeline to assess the number dwellings? Cause that's the the impact that yeah we're being asked about a lot uh from state legislators, the clergy. Uh other members of the community, it's not how many buildings, but how many homes um are gone.
Yeah, we're we're still uh trying to get that granularity of that data. Janet and Joe, I don't know if you have an estimate from the from the A and R or Florida folks you were with about when that. Up those results are expected, but we'd expect that to be able to inform the dwelling count.
Some of our best data is coming from the service organizations, the Southern Baptist, uh the Samaritan's Purse, uh Team Rubicon. Um they are cum- accumulating their data of what they did for surveys, and then we'll take that in, we'll cross. Check that with uh the surveys that Janet and I did with the state and Michelle. Um and then we'll look at that, but we've been waiting for their data. I've been, I talked with each of them this morning. Um and they're, they assured me that they're getting to us, but we only can go so much. They did a house-by-house survey. So they they did the intake and all that other stuff, so. Uh we did get a two-on-one spreadsheet, which I did share, and Amanda and Pam were looking at that to cross-reference. What they have on um uh the flood response data that we've been working with, crisis response, so.
So, so the hundred and ten significantly damaged are not the same as the red-tagged or yellow-tagged buildings? Cause the numbers, cause those numbers are different. So is the hundred and ten different from the number of yellow plus red-tagged? And are they buildings in which no one is definitely living?
The answer is yes, it's not the same number.
Thank you.
The numbers are all going to gel together, uh cross-reference each other. But no, it's not, one hundred and ten is not red-tagged or yellow-tagged, it's it's. It's a number that we've looked at, a number that the service organizations have identified, and I'm still waiting to hear from. The Florida folks that helped us with some more data input. So the one hundred and ten could escalate, it the number could go down. Substantial damages is a term of art by FEMA. It's just because you got water in the basement doesn't mean you're substantially damaged, so. We're hoping to refine that number in the. I'd like to say in the next week, um but I'm still waiting on that information.
I think you also find that those red tags or the yellow tags may change and to migrate down, so. The 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 amount of work being done at the uh north end and 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 River Street area is is huge. So they are subject to change. Uh they have some stipulations that uh are fluid, they may go down and become greens. And still have some minor stuff that need to be done, but it's in process. Uh one thing that we're battling is is that everything's wet right now. And so to dry them out, to get to the next level so that they can um get the electricians in there, get, you know, get it. It's really, it's a factor that they've been dealing with, and they know that they have a fifty-day clock going on with the uh. The heating season here, and and I, we reinforce that almost weekly uh at our meetings with our with our. Our volunteer organizations, so. We're we're trying, and like I said, we don't have a ton of uh contractors either. So so everybody that's there, they get swamped and then they're pulled in three directions, so really trying to coordinate that. Been working with uh Agency Human Services to bring in additional contractors from Vermont Gas, Cremona Power. We did our first four-house surveys, um and they're going back to see what they can do to outfit those and get them uh reoccupied. It's a slow process, it's a new new uh idea that they're pushing through, but we're trying to push every button that we can to make that happen.
Thank you so much for the work you're doing.
Sounds like that is coming from every every side and trying to figure out how to uh get a get to a good dataset. For the red and yellow tag buildings. Is how granular does the the data get for those? Like you have obviously a probably spreadsheet with every address and. But do you have like unit counts for those?
Yeah, and Captain Coppin has provided that.
Oh yeah, we're jumping ahead, okay, we can hold off on on. Um I ju- I just asked that because I got read, someone who's that home has been red-tagged, was denied her FEMA claim uh today. Uh so now she has seven days to appeal, they're looking for paperwork from our fire department. To um to substantiate uh why they need to appeal and why they've been impacted when their house has been red-tagged, so.
We've had that just today too, somebody was red-tagged and they were wondering why, and was because we weren't able to make contact with them. We want to make access, that section of the city was extremely uh impacted. And so with that, we did just assume until you can make contact with us, we're gonna red-tag it for now and then you come back, so. That that red, green, and yellow tags are fluid, so.
But red tag doesn't mean that people can't be there. Does it?
So they have certain stipulations of why they can't be there, either it is an electrical issue or there may be a foundation issue. There there's certain criteria that they need to be able to, you know, you cannot occupy it for like sleeping overnight and that type of stuff.
Thank you. Yeah, and so here's um some more about, um just want to remind renters that um. They're still eligible for FEMA assistance for a series of expenses, including for temporary housing, replacement of property. Um and out-of-pocket costs, so uh no, uh it's FEMA's. Uh thought to be the homeowner agency, but uh renters in the city should still make sure they're going to see FEMA. Up at the auditorium because FEMA can help them um as well. Um and uh any issues, um I just want to again remind people, this is this is something we had done before the flood. But we've moved our code enforcement um intake form up to the front page of the website. There's an arrow there to where you can find it, um so any issues, please. And and for council as well, please direct your constituents there, this is a big part of the process for us to do the intake. Uh and Fire Marshal Coppin will will make the visit uh after those forms are completed. Um and just the the data, and and I, this is fluid, um as Deputy Chief just mentioned. Um so this is a snapshot at when I got the data when I was making the PowerPoint, but that's ninety-one residences remaining in yellow tag. Um and those are primarily for electrical heating issues uh where they were underwater, um and about fifteen residences remaining red-tagged. Um and those are primarily uh entirely uh sort of landslide structural um issues caused by caused by the flood. Um next slide please.
Only question from Council during.
Do you know if there's a backlog in with code enforcement or what the turnaround time is on somebody making um a complaint form?
Um I don't know if, I don't have the exact turnaround time, counselor. Um I do know that. Uh Fire Marshal Coppin has been able to do some of the um. Some of the non-flood-related inspections into his daily routine, so I I think that bodes well for the flood ones, but. I don't know if Chief Cushman has a better estimate, uh I don't have a particular estimate on, I I don't have a any insight onto the the time from. Uh receipt to visit to the house, though Captain Coppin is is fairly quick on that.
Yes, he is very efficient. Um and it's it's a balance between the complaint forms and right now and the and the flood. Uh flood response um and and coupled with, he's one person in the office that's typically two that we have a vacancy in, so. Um it it is on his radar and he typically gets it within a day or two. It makes an initial visit within a day or two typically.
Thank you for the reminder, he is uh that office is down to fifty percent. Thank you for the reminder, he is uh, that office is down to fifty percent uh capacity, so he's doing it all on his own.
The reason that I ask is that we have residents that are asking for uh having demolition permits. So they're coming to us, asking us, hey, you know, what do we need to do in order to get a demolition permit? So we're referring them to the complaint form. So I just wanna, you know, understand the timeframe in which I can refer individuals and say, look, after you put this complaint form in, you should be able to get something done with with Nick within a couple of days.
I think that's fair, okay, thank you, sir.
Yeah, and I would just add, uh Captain Coppin is so good at his responses, he's telling me that um he he triages complaints as as one would expect he would at this point. Um and it's taken about forty-two, forty-eight, seventy-two hours um at this time is the is the lead time.
Yeah, I appreciate his work, he's been doing a great job.
He has. Um, next slide please. Um so, an update on the Hill. Um, the Red Cross Shelter closed uh officially as of the fourth. Um and it's sort of in a, the auditorium is on standby basis, there's just, there's some cops set up, but they're n- not housing anybody and no one's operating the shelter. Um so there are no more residents um regionally or local or otherwise who are being served uh at the shelter at this time by the Red Cross. Um some pretty impressive statistics uh from uh the folks who ran the shelter. Uh it was open for uh twenty-five total days. Um and it served uh two hundred forty-seven people in a hundred eighty-four households. They believe about ninety-six percent were Washington County residents. Um the highest overnight population was two fifteen and you have a little note there uh about a discrepancy. The first night of the evacuation, um we were at and really above capacity, the capacity up there is three sixty-seven. But once all was said and done and they uh took in all their registrations, the next morning, uh two hundred fifteen people had ended up um uh checking in. Um, a a ton of hours uh from their volunteers, uh all over forty-eight hundred hours. Um and uh twenty-eight hun- over twenty-eight hundred meals at the auditorium uh and almost that many uh served elsewhere in Berry by the Red Cross and the the great partners uh that are doing relief work on the Hill. Um and even more snacks, uh thirty-six hundred snacks, just about um at the auditorium and fifteen hundred uh elsewhere in the city. So really, um you you know, both uh a a sign of uh terrific uh partnership from the Red Cross and all the other relief organizations, but also a sign of the the really great need that our residents experienced um due to this flood. Um not to be forgotten, uh CB Dart did a great job running the uh animal shelter at the B O R. Uh it also closed um on on the fourth, uh and they took care of uh forty-one uh pets overall, although um I see my math there doesn't add up. Um thirty-four cats, uh five dogs and one small animal, which I, they didn't define and I didn't ask. Okay, maybe that one of the cats ate the other guinea pig was one of my math not working. Um but uh let's just call it around forty animals um taken care of and they they did great work. Uh I know towards the end of it, they were taking care of animals for people who weren't still at the shelter. They were just um animals that couldn't be taken uh where where people were going. They ended up finding foster homes, uh Stephanie and I were there with them just about every day, checking in, and these folks were doing just amazing work taking care of uh of the pets as well that were impacted by by the flood. Uh next slide please. Um so the uh, the Red Cross is not open, um but uh they are no longer staged at the auditorium and the Salvation Army is no longer staged. I wanna be very clear though, the Salvation Army, of course, as many people know, has a permanent present presence in Berry and they are still in Berry, they're just not at the auditorium. Um so they are, um you can find them uh elsewhere in the city. Uh Southern Baptists are uh the only uh relief group currently staged on the Hill. Um they are um, they are able to provide water, food, mold remediation uh supplies and and they're still doing muckouts with their teams. Uh they have teams coming in through Septem- uh into September. Um so they're they're making commitments into the early fall to 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 be here, continue to help uh people in the uh in the area. Uh we have a daily coordination meeting um with uh relief groups uh and recovery stakeholders uh every uh every morning, uh nine-thirty um on the Hill. Um and and now it's sort of shifting um from the uh relief organizations that were staged up there as part of the response to now the, I would just call them our regular relief organizations are here all the time for us, including the Berry Interfaith Group. Um we've invited B A D C as we started to shift from direct um response to now recovery uh because we think they'll be important um members to have at that table. Uh I know Counselor Wazak uh joins us wearing his his day job hat, um coordinating food uh for which we're grateful. Um so we're making sure that, you know, even though the shelter is not operating, um we're still having, um you know, we're still making sure their activities are coordinated uh and we know where to send residents for assistance um uh if if they need it. Um a- again, and and a reminder that the FEMA Disaster Recovery Center um remains activated at the auditorium uh in the basement. Uh you just need to follow the signs to uh get to it, that's very well uh pointed out where to go. Um they are open seven days a week from eight AM to seven PM. Um so we really, um you know, pressed hard for FEMA to to have a permanent presence here. We hope our residents take advantage of it, they can go and uh I know the website can be daunting, it can be frustrating to do it by email or on your phone. Uh go talk to a person, uh there's people, there's FEMA people sitting up there at the auditorium um and they can help you and um that's usually uh, at least for me anyway, it's a little easier, just go see a person than to try to do it on my phone. So, eight AM to seven PM, uh seven days a week, you can go talk to uh someone to help you with your uh recovery process. Uh next slide please.
Counselor during.
Yep.
So we have a hundred and ten properties that are significantly damaged. Do we know how many residents uh uh have been displaced or are living somewhere else?
Um, I don't think we have an an exact count, um I would expect that to be um sort of a a back of the envelope would be three or four times the nu- the 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 number of of houses damaged. So I would put it at three to four hundred, but that's back of the envelope. Um and I would ask the Chief uh Cushman, Deputy Chief Alworth or Janet if they have, I know they they work a lot with our state partners, if they have anything, a better estimate.
I guess my question really is, where are these people now?
Yeah, so a lot of people are, they've they have found informal arrangements with friends and family in the area. Um so a lot of people are couch surfing, a lot of people are staying with family. I mean, I, you know, the the the, there's a couple of uh residents that because of the nature of their issues, um we've had to become a little bit more personally involved in. And I know those people are staying with family around Vermont uh or they're they're staying at a at a friend's couch and we know those are temporary solutions um at this moment. Um but that's that's what they've been able to uh to find.
Uh we've been told by some of the landlords and and such, those folks have actually found other places to to stay for a while. We're not sure where, uh we encourage them to register with two-on-one and FEMA, that's really important. I think there's a gap there. Uh we we have to, I've personally gone to some of the landlords and asked them to tell their resident, uh their tenants to register so that we can get a hold on to that. Um we've actually worked with the Berry Integrated Faith Group to to uh get the word out, um they have a good pulse on that. Um but right now, I think uh the manager's estimate between two and four hundred people are uh is accurate. Um we just can't get a good basis on them, a lot of those folks um had people staying with them also in that North End. So we really don't have a good number. Um we did meet with the Agency of Human Services Commissioner, we did speak about that. Uh we batted around a couple of ideas that the manager is is working on and I think that that's the numbers that we're gonna be, between two and four hundred people. Uh we are cognizant that the uh heating season is coming up and we have pressed upon that with our state partners and uh the local uh Southern Baptists, that's why they've uh pledged to be here as long as they're needed, so.
Thank you, thank you, counselor. Uh next slide.
There's a couple, a couple follows, uh then our Counselor Wazak, yeah.
Uh just one thing I wanted the public to be aware of is that the state is working, the S E O C, the State Emergency Operations Center has approved uh a a targeted restart of the Vermont Everyone Eats program called Vermont Emergency Eats. And that's sort of the, for lack of a better term, the long-term food plan um for folks. And so Capstone will be can m- the local manager through SEFC and a whole bunch of bureaucratic nonsense. Um but that should be off the ground this week. Um and we should hopefully start being able to provide meals in the next day or two. Um and that will be in Berry and in Johnson and all across the state, but it'll be targeted for the folks who are affected by the flood. And the state, before anyone asks, the state is being very generous with the definition of impacted by the flood. So if you go in and attest that you've been impacted by the flood, you'll have access to the Vermont Emergency Eats program in the next couple of days.
A good plug and a win for restaurants and a win for people who uh are experiencing uh food insecurity. Um, uh, well, I wanna just say, I think it's tremendous that you're focused on rehousing, getting this back online, rehousing people as quickly as possible. I'm wondering, is our our local development corporation, B A D C, are they bringing any data of development-ready locations for for housing to this conversation? Like, do they have good inventories of vacant upper floors that could be housing or developable lots that um could be housing?
Um we've, we've only uh, B A D C started joining our daily coordination meetings this last week as we shifted from basic um response to recovery. Um so these are, uh we've asked them about inventory generally. Um and I know that M A has uh has some some datasets already um that I think will be helpful towards that conversation. Um one of the other areas where we've asked them to assist with is, um you know, we're gonna have a need for supplies and skilled labor. Um and so I think their their connections to uh industry and that's in that uh realm will be able to be helpful um as as well.
There's a question, Bern Rose.
Hi, thank you. Um Nicholas, could you tell me, you mentioned that uh some people, that the trucks will be going around to pick up debris unless a truck can't get to a location. I know that I've referred five or six um homes or uh tenants to um the pickup of debris. How would somebody know if it's decided that the trucks can't get there?
Um so that's something, thanks Bern for the question. Um Jeff, Jeff is coordinating our debris pickup and so he's, what he's doing is he's logging, um he's logging all of those sort of requests that we get, things that I notice, things that people notice um or bring to our attention. Um and as the trucks have bandwidth, um he's he's sending them to those spaces. Um and so if if, once we we get reports from the um, from the operators, uh if there's locations that they physically can't reach and that's where we activate sort of a Plan B. Um and then what the Plan C is, if if they, you know, or I guess the Plan B would be, if if they can't get there, then we we prioritize it for one of our volunteer activities. Uh because we can always get one of our half-tons with um three or four volunteers to go and make a run to a small street, dead-end street, whatever the case may be where the truck can't get. Um so, the other thing, Bern, is I would say people don't panic if your debris hasn't been been picked up. Um we are logging it. Um it's really, really what it is, is that we're focused on those eight um high-impact zones. Um so if if you haven't seen the the series truck yet, uh it doesn't mean it's been forgotten. It just means that they're, they're probably just loading up on i- i- in before they can get to those places. Um I mean, these trucks are picking up, Jeff might have better numbers, but certainly in the beginning, they were doing between a hundred thirty, a hundred eighty tons a day. Um so, there's a ton of debris, um if you haven't seen them yet, it's either they haven't gotten there. If they can't get there, then don't worry, um we're prioritizing it for volunteer pickups. Hope that answered your question.
So Ki- uh continuing to send the locations to Adam is the right way to report those?
Yeah, you can send them to Adam, you can send them to, the easiest thing to do is send them to me. Uh I'm I'm more than happy to receive them, um and I I coordinate with with Jeff and Adam and um usually between one of us will will know if it's a series locate, series is the name of the contractor. We'll know if it's a series location or if it's a volunteer location. Uh either way, if it's a series location and Adam has it, we're gonna, you know, it's good to know, we'll we'll send volunteers there. Um we were able to knock off um several locations this week where um residents had reported something to me. Um we had uh volunteers in the area and they were able to go take care of it before the truck needed to. So um I would say just send them to me and I'll, I will uh do uh, I will coordinate with the team.
So, thank you, and uh one place that I stopped at um had two tenants in it and um I suggested that they use code enforcement as a way to uh engage with their landlord who had been under-responsive.
Yep.
And um also urging people, a lot of tenants don't seem to know that they should go through the two-one-one process. So if there was some kind of just a little half-sheet um handout when, uh for like, I stay and talk with people a little bit and or write things down for them, but uh just some little handout for, especially for tenants um that we could pass out, volunteers could pass out and canvassers. Um I keep trying to go around the streets of my house because we were without power and that kept some people who had some pumps from having them run. And so they have quite a lot of damage because of that. And um I tried interfacing with Green Mountain Power to find out if they had any record of where that, the way those houses were. And so there's no record of doing that except for going door-to-door. Thank you, everybody, for their work, I really appreciate it and your answers.
Thanks, Bern.
We have another hand by someone who claims to be the former mayor of Berry.
I'm not, I'm not claiming that one as part of this, uh this is more of a Alliance Club uh just announcement. Since you're talking about that, other relief groups that are coming up, uh we are holding an event uh starting on Friday and on Saturday and Sunday. So not to take up time here, but uh just to point you to Front Porch Forum so that uh if you can, spread the word a little bit more, there's gonna be uh clothing, water, toiletries, household cleaning supplies, and we're able to get uh additional donations from another group. So uh if if you need additional items or want more information on that, just feel free to reach out and contact me.
Thanks for that plug, former mayor Herring, that was well, a well-earned title, so, Ellen Kay.
Well, just to follow up on that, on the seventeenth and eighteenth, on the eighteenth, there will be a free goods um swap. So it's at, it's at the Aldrich Library, you go on the seventeenth, you turn in six, I think, and bring household goods. Um and there's, you can go to the, I think on Front Porch Forum, they tell you exactly that you, they don't want people to bring bad stuff.
Yeah.
Stuff that you would use. Um but small household goods, tables, other things, that's happening. So you go on the seventeenth to drop off, people come on the eighteenth who need it. Um so that's important. Um I also wanted to ask, or just to bring to the forefront, um met I met a man last week who had been sleeping in his car because he had been in the pier and was flooded out of the pier. So, right, we got the hotel program got extended and the motel program um for unhoused people got extended and now these folks are finding themselves out once again. So I just wonder if there's any focus on that um and what can be done. This guy was living in his car but didn't have money to even move his car. So um was given about fifteen bucks so he could get some gas. So if Nicholas knows anything about that aspect of it, I'd like to hear it.
Yeah, no, Ellen, I um, I mean, I I wish I had a a response. I I mean, I know we were, we were struggling with feels like, you know, probably two months ago now, but feels longer uh to to figure out what we're gonna do for three hundred eighty-seven people who are coming out of the program and um we just don't have a lot of immediate solutions. What I can say is, as as uh Joe alluded to, is um we've been actively engaged with um Agency of Human Services. I wanna, you know, commend them, um they've been, they've been proactive, they've been reaching out, they've been um, you know, coming up with ideas, they want us to be uh, you know, creative and we're gonna be. Uh I think the challenge is that there's, there's um, you know, the the there's nothing obvious at the moment, so we're um, we're gonna turn over any rocks that we can and 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 do what's possible um to find solutions for the for the heating season. Um I I just, I I don't know of any immediate solutions for. I just, I don't know of any immediate solutions for people because we were, we didn't have any immediate solutions when the General Systems Program ended.
And I think Joe has a follow-up here in the room, Nicholas.
So those folks that were underneath the motel housing program, they really need to reach back out to either Washington County Economic Services or Rick DeAngelis's folks at the Good Samaritan. They will get a place for you to rehouse at. It may not be in central Vermont, but they do have the ability to do that. We are also working to stand up, back up the coalition that we had with Montpelier about the homeless task force. And that's being in the process right now. So we have looked at those avenues and we're working on that.
Yep.
Actually, Brooke Poullet is actually pulling that together now.
Just had a question regarding children that are from the area that may be displaced, that they would still be eligible to go to the same school district because of the McKinney-Vento Act. Is that correct? Okay. I just want to make sure that that's clear.
I think Stephanie reached out to the schools too, to see what they were gearing up for.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, councillor, I can say from one of my previous lives, I knew that one. I could answer that one.
Circling back to the debris, for those that are in the outlying areas, if they don't have a lot of flood damage stuff, they can actually bring it down to the dumpsters on Merchant's Row.
Yeah, thank you councillor for the reminder.
All right, I think we're ready.
Next slide? Yeah, I think I have a couple more slides. So volunteer opportunities, just want to lead off by saying, you know, we just thank you to all the volunteers, everyone who's shown up and done their part to help in our response. Just, it's not easy work. It's, this is not, you know, handing out a water bottle or a t-shirt. This is dirty work. And people have really stepped up to help our residents. So really appreciative of everybody who's taken time to come to Berry or from Berry and didn't have damage and had been helping. So we've been, the focus has been to deploy volunteers to help with all sorts of tasks. Debris removal has been a recent priority the last couple of weeks. As I said, we're trying to get those areas that are either tough to reach or isolated so we can, you know, sort of knock streets off the list. And we've had, as we alluded to earlier in the meeting, doing some canvassing for data gathering and then also assisting with muckouts. We've hired a part-time volunteer coordinator, Adam Jacobs, who had been doing some great work at the Rainbow Bridge Community Center as a local teacher. And so he's helping us manage the volunteers, is doing a great job at this. He receives requests for assistance, so sort of an intake process for people. He matches and deploys qualified volunteers to those intakes that he receives. And he's helping us with the tracking of hours for the FEMA intake match of volunteer hours. On top of that, he started a daily weekday volunteer hub at City Hall Park. So this is kind of a pilot for us to see what kind of interest and volume we get from people being able to volunteer during the week. We know there's an ongoing need. So if there's, you know, now that we have somebody who can sort of be dedicated to coordinating a central spot in City Hall Park, we'll try to deploy people to jobs during the week if we can. So he's been there from 11 to 4 yesterday and today. We're still continuing with the Saturday volunteer hub that's located at Aldrich Library. And those days have been going from 10 to 2. So those will continue to continue as well. And just last bullet there, as I mentioned, just deep appreciation for everyone who's stepping up. And my next slide, I believe, is the...
Got a couple more for you, Nicholas.
Sure.
My first question was, do you know when we'll be able to get some information as far as how many volunteers we had, how many jobs had come in and how many jobs were dispatched out?
Yeah, we should, we should be able to get that, something very, I could turn around probably by the end of the week. I know we're tracking it sort of day by day. And I mean, it's been remarkable. What I will say, you know, I think the first weekend was around 400 volunteers. I don't have the number of jobs at the, you know, at my fingertips. I know AOT, for example, had 85 volunteers and they did 35 jobs. So it's really great. I mean, the response has been terrific. I could give you some more quantifiable data probably by the end of the week. What I'll also say is that it's waning and we knew that would happen. I don't think that's, it's not an indication of the commitment to people. It's just that, you know, it's been four weeks now since the flood. And we expect it to keep waning as, as we get into, back into the school year and into the fall. So the numbers will probably show, you know, gradual decline. But I'll get you some data, some more quantifiable data by the end of the week. And then relief for homeowners. So the council has taken several actions already to provide relief to our residents. There's going to be abatement of water and sewer bills. There's, as I mentioned earlier, the council has waived the building on flood hazard permit fees. And the council also waived parking meter enforcement. And property tax abatements, we know, will be forthcoming for many impacted taxpayers as well in due time. I wanted to bring to council, for council consideration of an additional relief measure. You know, it was brought to our attention that the city could consider the suspension of electrical permit fees for residents also making flood-related repairs. Bringing this to council, because obviously a lot of the damage was to electrical systems and obviously, and it many times goes hand-in-hand with the building permits that are required as well. So this wasn't, this wasn't brought to council at its first meeting after the flood because we basically brought to you sort of the suite of relief measures that have been done in the past, bringing this for your consideration. It's really up to the council whether to proceed with this relief or not. And if you do, there's a motion there. I think if council chooses to do it, I would propose a similar structure to the other fees, which was to limit it and authorize this waiver and for a time ending upon two weeks' notice from me to residents.
Quick question on that, manager. Did, I thought the electrical permitting went back to the Division of Fire Safety because we don't have an electrician on staff. Is that not the case?
We still, so is Janet in the room? She can perhaps answer this better. I know she's, she's holding some permit fees as well. I think they have to come through the city as well. Janet?
Thank you, manager. We are still issuing single-family owner-occupied. The state is taking duplex, commercial and multifamily.
Thank you, Janet.
You're welcome. So we are seeing more than came in in 2011. So that's why I brought this to the manager's attention to bring forward to you folks.
Are plumbing permits still on the table too? Are plumbing permits?
No, we gave up plumbing many years ago.
That's all goes to Division of Fire Safety.
So in the interest of providing clarity to residents and the staff as quickly as possible, I would make that motion. And we can ratify under the consent agenda at our next meeting.
Oh, good.
There's a motion in a second. Any further discussion on suspension of electrical permit fees as presented?
Stressing that this is residential only, not commercial. Unfortunately, commercial still has to go through the state process.
And so just to be clear, so we've waived building flood hazard permit fees but not, and water sewer but not zoning permit fees? Okay, all right. Is there a reason why zoning permit fees were still hanging in?
In the city, we, because we have building applications, whereas, as you know, in some communities only have zoning rules. Those communities cover more building-related type applications. Ours are predominantly under the building.
Got it, okay.
Thank you, Janet.
You're welcome.
All right, so we have a motion in a second. If there's no further discussion, then all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, you guys have it, motion carries and you got to...
Last slide, I believe is my last one, just how to stay informed slide. So you have some screenshots there. So what, we're keeping the website. We have a dedicated website for the flood response. You can see it there in the screenshot. There's a banner, an orange banner at the top of the front page of the website. You click that and it takes you to that screenshot below. And your landing page is sort of the, you know, the daily updates that are provided. So you can see there in that screenshot, that's the update from the 7th at 6:00 PM. So all of the relevant sort of daily updates are on that landing page. If you look to the right, there's a little bar, a menu bar with links. If you want to volunteer, if you need volunteer help, for a link for press releases, events and announcements, recovery resources, the street closures map and the debris pickup. So really encourage residents who want to stay informed. There's a one-stop shop on the website that's really easy to get to. The other place where we're basically making announcements on two locations. One is the website, one is the Facebook page. So you can find the Facebook page at Berry City Vermont, at Berry City VT, excuse me. And you'll get both sets of information, sometimes in different formats. But you'll get all the information on either place. Really encourage folks to go there for the information. We're not using Front Porch Forum really because of the sort of the lag in posting. So just want to make sure residents know where to get the latest info. This is where they can get information about debris pickups, about the household hazardous waste drop-off. Those sorts of things are all posted on both sites. And that is, I believe that was the last slide.
Great overview. What a tremendous amount of work by everybody. Councillor Stockwell?
I have a couple of questions, I think for Janet and Brian. So we've rebuilt, I can see that people are rebuilding now. And I can see that we're doing some repaving. What changes do we need to make in codes so that people don't rebuild in the same areas using exactly the same technology? And what about repaving? I know that there's pervious pavement, but you can't do it in high-traffic areas. So what are the solutions? Because this isn't our only flood.
Well, I'll tackle the first part of your question and say that we've already been talking about Berry's going to have another Renaissance, right? So our poor north end has been hit incredibly hard again, this time even worse than 2015. I wasn't here for the 2011 flood. When I get done with substantial damage, it's probably not going to be a comfort to hear that you're going to have to raise your first floor, potentially two, three, four feet. Or fill in your basement because your first floor has to be that first ground floor, not your basement. We've got to start thinking about how do we want to plan for housing and what do we do with those lots that have been damaged? And the people, people are starting to walk away from their homes. It's going to take a lot of work, a lot of innovation. I think in 10 years, Berry City's going to look a lot different in one end of the city. We've got to rally together and figure out what is it that we want our little city to look like?
Can council, how can council help?
I think we're going to have to get right on getting a consultant, think about what we're going to do. This is going to take some creativity, a lot of public interaction. People need to come to meetings. They have to be willing to listen as well as speak. I think the next couple of years is going to be a very interesting time for all of us.
Interesting, yes, and difficult.
That too. Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
In terms of like building back better infrastructure?
Thanks, Janet.
Right now, I think what I would concentrate on is probably upgrading our, you know, the streams and trash racks that we have. Because I, talking with the geologists, that it was, you know, the, that last inch or two of the storm that really sent everything over the top. So if we can try to keep that, you know, in the channels that it's supposed to, I think that would probably help. And then with the pervious pavement, again, that's not for high-traffic. And I don't know how well that would work as far as absorbing, you know, like a storm-type of thing where it's more of the daily runoff is, I think, where they're talking with the pervious pavement issue. But again, any new technologies would be greatly... They can't hear us at all? Can you hear us?
I can hear you.
I thought I saw something up there.
Thanks. Do you have any other questions? So with Kat?
So I have a general question. I have two lots across from my house that were FEMA buyouts after Irene. And my understanding is they are city-owned lots, which is great. It's beautiful green space in my little neighborhood. But when there is a FEMA buyout, the land is ineligible building. So just because it's topical to Councillor Stockwell's question and Janet talking about the, what future Berry could look like, does council have, or Nicholas, have any idea of what areas of the community might end up having FEMA buyouts and therefore end up being ineligible to be residential in the near future?
Can I pump that to Councillor Lozone, who is actively involved in the Vermont Economic Resilience Initiative?
No, it's not. Because I've been talking about it every day at every level of government, how we rebuild, how we rebuild better, smarter. You know, interestingly, Berry City Place, which is one of the more recent buildings in Berry, that was open at 6:00 AM the next day, never skipped a beat, had issues flushing their toilets because of the city's infrastructure. But as far as the building itself, suffered very little damage other than the garden area leading up to the building. So, you know, that's an example of sort of smart construction. I think as we move forward, the governor has expressed an interest in some sort of state buyout program. We've got to be very careful using the FEMA program because, for example, and don't get your folks up, hopes up, folks. I'm just kind of spitballing here. But if we bought, you know, the north end of the city, three homes up towards Beckley Hill from Route 302, and we bought out this huge swath of homes, you can't ever build there under the FEMA regulations. However, there are likely going to be areas in the city where it's absolutely appropriate not to build there. It's more appropriate to give the water a place to go so it doesn't inundate the neighborhood. In that case, a combination state and FEMA buyout would be absolutely appropriate so that the higher-lying lands you could raise those housing units. You know, we're going to need housing units and we're going to need a lot. So it's a great question and it's something we all need to be... Janet's shaking her head because she loves this stuff. And we all should, and we're all going to learn to love this stuff because we have to build back smarter, not necessarily better.
Thank you for helping establish that expectation for the community. I think that type of priority is really good when people are asking about FEMA buyouts. What is the downstream impact from that type of process?
We'll be thinking about all of that. Thanks.
I think probably when, Janet, when you're speaking about consultants, were you thinking about a similar project to the Vermont Economics Resilience Initiative where the river scientists came to town, talked with the community, brought economic development, people, urban designers?
Yes, yes, you were spot on. The mayor is referring to what we call the Very Report. And that came out after the 2011 flood and I think it was published in 2013. There's a whole myriad of projects that we could do to help with our flooding, widening the rivers, more trash racks. I still want to join the community rating system. There's a lot of things that we can do that's been outlined for us already. People talk about dredging. Dredging is not the correct answer when the river needs to widen. We're going to flood again. It's a fact of life. We need a place for the water to go as it moves through Berry City. So we've got to look through those reports that have been generated on our behalf with potential projects and things that we can do. And prioritize those projects and find the funds for them.
Thank you. Councillor Stockwell?
I don't know if you know this answer to this question, but for the land around the land... but for the land around the landslides, like it's obvious when it falls down. But how does that stress the land above it? And are there things that need to be done to hold back? Like after there's a landslide, what, how do you ensure that the rest of the hill, which is like a lot of Berry?
That's a great question.
Yeah, I, I don't know if we know the answer to that yet.
Brian walked around with several geologists, a couple of which were from University of Pennsylvania or Pennsylvania Department?
Department of Transportation.
Yeah, and, and he can share a little bit of what he learned.
That team that was here, I think, was top notch and they were, they were even able to explain what happened in, you know, layman's terms. Um, so I, hopefully between that and we have a geotechnical engineer on our staff that we're meeting with on Friday that we're gonna try to team up with the, both of them and kind of, uh, split the landslides out and so have both two teams work on them. Any remediation that can be done in that protecting the upstream will be part of, protecting the up, uphill will be part of that remediation.
Thank you.
I like that you're, uh, just speaking of uphill, I'm thinking about all the lands that surround us that aren't within our municipal boundaries. But impact, you know, maybe they weren't impacted, but they were certainly the, the land development patterns are contributing like the non-forest, non-farm rural sprawl in Berry Town or Berlin with long driveways with tons of stormwater that are sub-jurisdictional to any state permit. And how that's impacting, how those luxury homes and luxury driveways are shooting all their water downstream to Berry City and flooding out the poorest neighborhoods and some of the, uh, uh, um, the most under-resourced households. So I think it's something we need to get serious about at the Regional Planning Commission. Two, when we're looking at, when we're doing those plan reviews, um, to make sure that we're holding our neighboring municipal palaces accountable. And same thing for extensions, the water and sewer. If we're enabling sprawl that's harmful to Berry City, we need to, we need to put the brakes on. We need to, we need to go aggressively after those agreements. In my view, my two cents. Uh, Ellen K.
So my neighborhood has the channel that runs through it with the, the cement wall, with the concrete walls that totally jumped, jumped the walls, um, and did a lot of damage and came down from above, um, the way you're talking about from the streams that come down from sort of Berry Town and, you know, the layers above, above Berry City. Um, I have a neighbor who's, who lives right next to that, that, that channel. And the damage, you know, it, the wall has fallen down, flowed through the yards. Um, who fixes that?
I don't know the answer.
Yeah.
I, I think this is, yeah, I think this is thirty Park Street. Ellen, is that right?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, so I don't believe, uh, I know Brian's been out there. Um, I mean, they've, uh, they've sort of reached out to us about an, uh, a, a federal fix where we would have a, a match. Um, but at this point, um, we don't believe it's the city's obligation. Doesn't mean that something does need to be done about it. We're, we're still trying to explore whose, we're trying to explore whose obligation that is. Let me just put it that way.
Yeah.
It's not on city property. Um, doesn't mean that it didn't impact other residents of the city. Um, so I'll just leave it at that.
Clearly, that was not a choice of the homeowners who live there. They didn't put it in, they don't have the power to change it. They don't have the power to fill it in. It's not theirs.
Yeah.
And so it's really important. Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to finish my thought before you hear the answer.
I, I think the, the waters are property of the state, but the homeowners own up to the edge of the water. So those walls would be responsibility of the homeowners unless they're in the public right of way. I mean, th- they were there when the purchase, the property was purchased. So that's, I mean, I don't know who, that's the way it is.
Isn't that akin to a sidewalk though? I mean, you don't own the sidewalk in front of your house because it's in front of your house.
It's in the public right of way.
Right.
Right.
Water is not the right of way.
That's a state, you saying it's a property of the state.
Right. The state of Vermont owns all the, the water in the state. So those streams, as public works, we maintain the, the crossings as they cross the public right of way. But when they pro, when they cross private property, the land up to the edge of the streams are property of the homeowners.
Hey, Counselor Sean Bell has a follow up.
Um, just listening to the conversation from both of you, it goes back to some of what was been said earlier that so much of this is structures that were built years and years and years ago without the anticipation of everything that's happening now, without the anticipation of what's happened up in Berry Town to bring stuff down, you know, passing stuff on to lower places. Um, the fact that the river keeps changing and then we have the climate change we have to look at. We have so many pieces here that at a certain point, people can't be responsible for it because it's, I, I know, I, I know that. I'm just saying it's way out of anybody's hand at this point. It really is.
But I may speak to this probably, we're probably, uh, over the next year and certainly I'm sure this has happened in prior floods, there've been a lot of really complicated cases. Um, where there's a variety of different programs and funding stacks that have to come together and, uh, and, and probably there's some private obligation, public funding. Uh, maybe, maybe you could get to a hundred percent of support. But, uh, in the past, I think there was a committee, Counselor Lozon, that had some individual assistance navigation.
And as, Ellen, as things get, get done, you know, as we, as we get further into recovery mode, um, you know, I'm sure if there, you know, what you're talking about is, I know the wall you're talking about is built with concrete waste blocks. Um, I suspect if that homeowner didn't have the resources to have, um, to have those repairs affected, and all you're talking about is lifting concrete, a little bit of digging with a machine and lifting concrete waste blocks where, back where they were. Um, I suspect we'd find a way to get it done. Because if we don't, it only creates a greater flood hazard because now instead of directing the stream, the stream is kind of going where it's, where it wants and threatening the whole neighborhood. So, you know, it's a process, but through, just like we did in eleven and fifteen, we're gonna, I have no doubt that the staff and the council and everyone in the city is gonna work really hard to make sure that nobody gets left behind regardless of their resources. But to say it's gonna happen, you know, like next week, probably not.
Right, and this is one of those build back smarter.
Yep.
Ideas. That channel was never, it's, that thing is never gonna work for climate change anymore. We just, we know that now.
Right, but in, but in the meanwhile, I mean, there's, there's a part of rebuilding and there's a part of restoration. And that's always the challenge is the funds that you have available for mitigation versus the funds you have available for rebuilding. And, you know, that's gonna be everyone's challenge, not just at the local level, county level, state level, every level going forward. But good question. Thanks.
All right, I think we have, um, a trestle update, uh, from Representative Anthony. Oh, and I see, uh, a hand up from Amy Gelford.
Yeah, I was just, um, gonna quickly mention, kind of to Counselor Stockwell's question about, um, where we can do things and pervious pavement. I think one thing that we own, um, as the city is things like, um, the recreation paths. And so I remember when, um, the section on Smith Street was built a few years ago shortly after I, I moved here. I was disappointed because it just turned into a giant asphalt sidewalk. Um, and it fixed the sinkhole in front of Irving, but it's still all hard pavement. And one of the places that flooded really, really badly is the Berlin Street Bridge. Um, so we have tons of hardscape from the granite sheds in that area. Um, I don't know that a little bit of pervious pavement would have, would have fixed this. But if you look at the G I S maps, um, of where all the stormwater outfalls go, a large part of our neighborhood is either, um, cross sheet flow to the Stevens Branch or it collects into pipes that all dump out just upstream of the Berlin Street Bridge. So we have to look at some of these areas that were heavily impacted and see, you know, what is there we can do while we rebuild other things in terms of, um, doing something about infiltration in those areas or not making all of the outfalls happen, um, right in that area. I know, um, Representative Anthony is, is painfully familiar with that, that neighborhood and, and our stormwater issues there as well.
Great segue to his.
Thank you.
How you holding up?
Good evening. Uh, very important stuff. Um, the manager's staff provided you with, um, a handout, which sort of gives you the, at least the history as I know it, of, uh, potential contributions of the railroad trestle, which for those of you who are not familiar with the north end, is roughly, um, located, uh, in back of Cumberland Farms on North Main Street. It is, carries a spur of the main line across the Stevens Branch to Willie, Zon, Venetti, Front Street, which had rail fingers going to at least ten granite sheds, most of which are extinct now. And so the spur, uh, peters out, disappears into the dirt about fifty, uh, yards or so across the river. In any case, it is the last surviving structure that is supported by pilings driven into the river bed. And that's my issue, not the trestle, it's the pilings. They are debris catchers, just like if you intended them to be there. Well, no one intended them to be there and they shouldn't be there, frankly. They are a contributor. They are, uh, the sole cause of two ice jams that have flooded the area. Uh, the most recent ice jam actually, uh, structurally damaged the trestle. It was taken out of service, um, at least, uh, six, seven years ago. I had introduced a bill, uh, very early on in my career to ask the A O T to sort of evaluate the importance, necessity, uh, and certainly reconsider the architecture so the pilings could go. Uh, alas, that looked like it was going to go somewhere. Mayor Herring, myself, um, and, uh, the Chair of House Transportation, Representative Kurt McCormick of Burlington, visited in January twenty twenty. Two things happened, COVID and Kurt McCormick fell ill, had to resign from the chairmanship. And so in essence, uh, even without A O T's, uh, participation, active participation in any discussion, the issue sort of melted like ice cream in July. Uh, I then, um, said, well, if the agency is not going to sort of grapple with this as a serious issue for the city of Berry, as I think it is, I'll go elsewhere around that, um, responsibility of the A O T. And I went to emergency management, uh, because I had an old friend who worked, uh, for Director Borneman. And I said, you know, for me, this is a resiliency issue. It's a flood issue. It's not a transport issue per se. Uh, although yes, it carries rail cars, but it's the pilings that are the problem, not the rail cars. And, uh, lo and behold, um, with the good, uh, work of emergency management, uh, who asked Set Vermont Regional Planning to say, what are the grant opportunities to study? If you will, what are the alternatives, uh, for having a trestle at all? Or redesigning it so there are no pilings? Uh, lo and behold, A O T decides to join the, the party and essentially says, we will administer the grant. Uh, I thank emergency management ten times because without them saying, we'll take over this issue, uh, I'm not sure we would be here today with a contractor consultant who is studying, doing the cost benefit analysis, trying to figure out what are the four or five desirable outcomes, taking into consideration that the retention of the pilings have a cost called flooding. So that's, that's a good outcome. It took six and a half years to get there, but it's a good outcome. Uh, if I may shift gears a little bit, because the last four weeks have for all of us been an education as the discussion has amply illustrated. Some of the old timers in my neighborhood said, you know, I wish when they built the Berlin, um, Street Bridge, which is a bit before my time, but not that much, uh, why didn't they replace it with a truss bridge? And I cannot answer that. I can tell you that not using truss technology as we did on Granite Street because Manager Fitzgerald insisted on it for Granite Street for various, um, soil disturbance issues. If you, uh, were going to drive I beams into the, anyway. You lose about five or six feet of clearance from the river. So I thi, I think there's a learning curve going on here, both Willie and Berlin are I beam. Berlin picked up, I can't tell you how many tons of trash because the river was higher than the stream. Now, as anybody could divine and, and deduce, uh, the, uh, flood stage height of the river is higher than the bridge for potentially two reasons. The bridge isn't high enough or the river bed, bed has risen, simple as that. Uh, I can tell you, uh, with now the, the four week education that we all have had, there's no question, uh, and Manager McKenzie, a while ago, attempted to remove some of the sediment that came in after Irene because there's now an island. As streams do when they drop their, uh, silt, they create islands and then the river course essentially goes around the island. Well, one of the ways around the island is of course created the structural problem that condemned to, condemned to properties just downstream from, uh, Berlin Street, Mont Scampini. So I, I'm saying this is a multifaceted conversation. Yes, it includes A O T, but frankly, more centrally, it's emergency management and, uh, Se- Secretary of, uh, Environmental Conservation. Cause we, we obviously are gonna run into, here's a choice way to deal with widening the riverbank and here's a no-no way. And we have to have that conversation. So while I came to talk about the trestle and I still believe it's an important contributor to the fact that the trouble, uh, area for the north end is anywhere from Blackwell, you can argue it's Blackwell or Berlin downstream to Willie. That's the squeeze right there. You got hundred and thirty degree turns, you got forty feet walls, you got the worst of the worst, uh, for creation of velocity and a river that actually folds back on itself. And for me, and I would, uh, thank, um, um, Superintendent, uh, Streets who, who has left. But the guys were down at my place, uh, taking out some of the silt. Now you can see the distance between the pavement and the silt level, um, that just arrived four weeks ago. We are talking about thirty inches. And it's deeper right below Berlin Street because that's precisely where the river was stopped in its tracks, dropped the sediment. It's between there and the end of Vine, et cetera. It's the, that, that S sequence is where the river cannot do what it normally does, which is spread and slow. It is confined and it speeds up and then folds back on itself and drops the silt. That's a big discussion. And, and it's not just truss bridges versus I beam. That's, that's, that's something that now we look, we know something about, but, um, it's bigger than that. It's riparian, uh, behavior by riparian owners. Uh, I, I don't want to go on too long, but sadly, when I was living there, uh, at least fifteen years after I moved there, two people who are professionals, uh, who should know better, uh, hired a dump truck, uh, cause. Hired a dump truck because they were losing part of their parking lot. The dump truck had four loads of ground, just dumped it over the bank. Right below Berlin Street. Nobody ever said boo. It was known to planning and zoning at the time. This is a long time ago, twenty some odd years ago. And these are folks who had graduate degrees or law degrees or they're smart people and. That was just necessary for their pecuniary well-being. Had nothing to do with the health. Or the flood resilience of the neighborhood sadly. So that's been going on, on and off for a while and that behavior has to stop, but also sort of be more intentional as I think your. Many of your comments is saying, you know, we just have to assume that we're going to see this again. We have to give the. The river some additional birth where we can find it. And it may be down, it may be sideways, but that's gotta happen or. FEMA will buy out and then you can't build and I don't know where you go from there. So let me quiet down and accept any questions you have.
Yeah, not necessarily a question, but a comment. I want to say thank you for the work that you've done on this and. Your constant support of modifying our river to make it safe for our residents. You know, and, and I was talking to you before and, and people get their cockles up over the dredging. And like you said, you know, make it deeper and wider. I remember as a kid down by those trestles on just. You can see the difference in less than thirty, less than thirty years. And I, I can't imagine anybody that's been here longer, you can just imagine even more. It's just. Yeah, thank you.
My pleasure. And yeah, hopefully the study will be done within a matter of months, not years. And AOT will have to respond to that.
Thank you.
At least we got some momentum and thank you very much for the support.
Thank you, Representative Anthony. Alright, so that takes us to item F, which is a discussion of proclamation. That the Emergency Management Director and I issued related to the preservation of. National Register Historic Properties and a temporary pause on demolition of housing units to preserve housing stock. Within the city.
Sure. So I was just curious the genesis of it.
Yeah, so I heard. That the Italian Baptist Church was going to pull a demolition permit. It's one of the three. National Register Historic Places that's most significant to Italian heritage in the city of Barry. I called the zoning office to confirm that, that, that was potentially an outcome. And, and took action to prevent that knowing that it's outside the Design Review District. The criteria for demolition. Is lighter in those areas and we had just lost a case in the Environmental Division of the Superior Court that I think that. Where we had even stronger criteria in the Design Review District than outside of it. So that was the, the first thing. The second thing was to. Ensure that we maintain homes that can be rehabilitated. So if it's in a, it's in a state of structural disrepair. It would be left to the health officer or absent that to, there's still a check and balance by allowing for two thirds of the council. To, to allow demolition to proceed. And that's because, you know, the city has been losing population for many decades now. We're three thousand fewer people. Than we were from our population peak, yet we have much more extensive infrastructure. Our fiscal sustainability is really at risk. If we start, if we continually demolish taxable value upon which the city depends to provide services. And I figured that the homeless crisis was going to get even worse. If, if we didn't do everything we could to try to bring those units back online that are, those units that can be brought back online as quickly as possible. Back online.
So was there any consideration or is there any ability to loosen regulations on building buildings? Within our, instead of, instead of restricting.
Yeah, I mean, I think that I asked Nicholas a couple of weeks ago, and I know that the staff have been having conversations of pretty much exactly that. How do we. The zoning ordinance to make it easier for folks to, or. Easier in a way that is also smarter to rebuild and ensure that we don't lose too many people.
You want to take that agenda or? But we have the Bio-Modernization Grant and we're going to be going for a consultant, right?
Yep, and with the legislative changes and, and in light of flooding. I have seen the requests that are very different from building now. People need and want smaller setbacks. We now have a density requirement. We've got to rethink everything that we just did to be sure that it's the right thing to do for our city. And we have that grant and that consultant is going to help us walk through it.
How long? So we're, the order is in effect until we get new zoning regulations? Or the proclamation?
Yeah, or it could be, or it could be lifted. You know, if we get to a point, but yeah, the way it's written is that it's until interim zoning would be adopted. To Council Wazza's point has asked for a look at any potentially low barrier. Changes that are. That would obstruct redevelopment. However, there's just been a preemptory piece of legislation. To our local zoning in Act forty-seven, S-one-hundred that increases density and allowable uses statewide. So in, in a way. There's already been some statewide shift, but there could be additional changes. And it would lift if we adopted interim zoning.
So we would have to maintain the state of emergency to keep that proclamation going, correct?
You know, I, I want to look at that again. I'm not, I, but I think it's, yeah, it would be valid.
That had me scratching my head.
But then attorney looked.
I mean, I like it. I don't have, doesn't affect me. I don't have a dog in the hunt. But I just questioned the authority because it's like, well. It made me kind of think, are we still in a state of emergency? I mean, we're in a state of restoration and recovery.
Declared one last meeting. We just declared one last meeting and, and so I believe we're still in a state of emergency, right? Either way, it was reviewed by an attorney. Yeah.
I mean, that was my first question. Kind of, oh, we're still in a state of emergency. I thought we were.
Well, I mean, there's still homes that could be smashed by landslides, so.
There's still what?
Could be smashed by landslides. Yeah, we're getting.
A citywide.
There's forecast up to four inches of rain tonight.
We're still in a citywide state of emergency. There are some folks who aren't in their homes. There are some folks whose homes are at risk. Individually, they're certainly in a state of emergency. My comment was citywide. Doesn't feel to me like we're still in a state of emergency.
Well, it does to me and I'm going to stand by my decision.
And like I said, I don't have a dog in the hunt. I don't care one way or the other. It's just, yeah.
My concern is. We'll end up in a situation similar to the LNM diner where. They can't demolish the building. But they're not going to fix it. And, and I don't know if that's a good place for us to be. So I'm just going to point that out there.
To be fair, that building is currently being.
Correct, correct. I, but I mean, it's been how many years?
But it's actually being renovated.
Again, four years is a pretty long time, but just pointing it out.
Alright, so that takes us to upcoming business. Manager Stroll Castro, do you have other things you want to preview?
Um, yeah, so one of the things that. Yep, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, Councillor Dearing had a question.
Oh, yep.
I had some residents curious who was going to end up paying for the stuff. I mean, the people want to demo, demo their buildings. They're not being able to perhaps. Now the city is forcing them to rehab their buildings so they can be habitable. Now, if they don't want to fix the building, who's going to pay to fix the building? We're essentially forcing these people to fix the buildings if we deem it possible. So the question was, you know, who's going to fit the bill for that?
Well, it's, it's a temporary measure to get a better handle on the housing number. We don't even have good housing numbers about impacts. How bad their damage, how many units, what utilities are needed, what's the structural damage. I think we need better data and then.
Completely agree.
Data, we can, we can proceed.
So is that what we should be telling our constituents is that when we get better data, we'll kind of have a better handle on it?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to, you know, ask because these are questions that are being asked of me. Like a resident that lives on the corner of Main, North Main Street and Third Street. And they have two properties and they're kind of having some issues with demoing one of those properties. Because to rebuild the property, the housing unit, the density requirements are not which that they'd be able to rebuild. So it kind of poses an interesting question as far as who's going to rebuild it and those kind of things.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good point. And I mean, in, in the, on the inverse of that is for every home that's demolished, the people who pay. On the other side of that is all of us, we pay more in taxes to cover the, the city services or we have to make cuts and start. We have to start laying off police officers and firefighters and other city employees. So it's either we maintain the grand list and maintain our fiscal capacity or we cut city services. And so. There's a lot of dueling private and public interest that I think need to be balanced and. The, the proclamation was meant to be cautious and make sure that demolition wasn't happening. In an indiscriminate way that could be harmful to the city's ability to provide services and to keep, to keep people employed doing the essential work that, that they need to do. Alright, Councillor Stockwell.
Thank you, Mayor, for doing that. I think it's a great, it's a great move to put brakes on demolition before we have more information. That's all.
Alright, so we have upcoming business.
Yeah, I mean, there'll be some homes that are torn down. That's simply a fact. I don't think it's unreasonable. We're simply saying. When I read the residential side, I mean, all due respect, I'm like, well, why would anybody do that anyway? I mean, what we're saying is that if a, you know, for example, if you owned a home and it required fifty thousand dollars worth of repair. Well, alright, with the average price of a home being two hundred thousand, why wouldn't you invest fifty thousand in saving that home? Conversely, if it was a multifamily home. That required a hundred thousand dollars worth of repair, but I could rent three apartments for a thousand dollars a month? Well, why wouldn't I put the money in to fix it? You know, unfortunately, there are going to be some homes that will supersede any mayoral proclamation. Because FEMA will say, look, this home is so badly damaged. If you want to rebuild it, you got to lift the whole thing up. Four feet. And that's going to be a horse, you know, that's going to be the long, the long conversation. So yeah, like I said, I'm, I'm okay with it because I think we're, we're a long way from really making those decisions anyway.
Alright, Manager Stroll Castro, previewing next, so we have next Tuesday. We're going to approve the tax rate at five thirty via Zoom. Just a single item agenda, right?
I would say we should do the consent agenda too, just so that we're approving the warrants and the, the minutes, et cetera.
You're still muted, Nicholas.
Sorry, I muted myself. Yeah, the, the only other thing that I know is coming down quickly will be the, I mentioned that we have to do a new paving bid. For flood related damage. So as quickly as we can turn that around, we were thinking that there might need to be a meeting on the twenty second. But if we can turn it around faster, we will do that as well. I just been emailing with Brian and Dawn. So that's a possibility as well. And then I know probably for the twenty ninth. I've been talking to Angie Harbin and she's prepared to discuss the item that was pulled from the agenda also on July eleventh about Downstreet's potential purchase of. Hotel downtown. So that will probably be coming back to council on the twenty ninth.
Thank you. Anything else that anybody wants to preview? So that takes us to roundtable. And I'll start with Councillor Booten. Councillor Stockwell.
Pass.
Councillor Chambel.
Um, I think this was a great conversation tonight and I'll pass with that.
Councillor Wazzaq.
Pass.
Councillor Dearing.
Man, I am so excited. I've got a hundred and fourteen kids playing youth football. Grades first to eighth grade. We start our training camp on Monday, go for two straight weeks, five days, and then we're into the regular season. We've got twenty-one more kids than we had last year. So we're going to have a lot of fun with my fifth and sixth grade tackle football program. I'll pass with that.
Councillor Lozon.
So it's eight fifteen, starting these, if we had started at seven, it would be quarter of ten. So. Starting these meetings early gives you a false sense of security, like, look, I'm getting home early. So like, like we earned something tonight. But it really doesn't. It's all an illusion until you're, but I guess everything's an illusion. As I mentioned earlier, we're talking about housing every day. To anyone who will talk to housing. Talk to us about housing, talking about prefab housing. We ran into a company in Canada, a really interesting company that has done a number of multifamily units that go together like Legos. And they do them, they've done them in Quincy, Mass. Hoping next week I may actually get up to Canada and visit their factory. The really cool thing is that they actually have a number of prefab units that are currently available. You can rent them, you can buy them. So we're looking at that as well. You know, they're not. I mean, they're, they're, they're FEMA shacks essentially, but. As we go through, towards the more inclement weather, I think we're going to need choices and we're going to need, the more choices are better. So. You know, at the right time, I think, I don't know if maybe the council could devote. Maybe every other meeting or maybe we start meeting weekly, really sorry. But I think we're going, really going to have to start having these conversations about. What do we want to buy out? Where do we want to buy out? What projects do we want to advance? Had a great conversation with Chris Cochrane today about, you know, infill development and I'm all over that. I think that's, that's a great thing, but I, as I said to Chris, I don't think it's going to be enough. That's the problem. We need to be quick, we need to be efficient and we need to be big. You know, we need eighty to a hundred units and I think infill. While it certainly has, if the city hadn't flooded, I'd be all over infill development, you know, building a fourplex here, a triplex here, a duplex there, a single family here. But we all know we're going to need more. And so that's where I'm trying to focus the discussion. And I don't know if maybe the. Maybe every third meeting or something, Mayor, maybe the council could not have a meeting like this, but just sit around the table and start spitballing ideas because that's what. We've been doing for the last four weeks. So just a thought. And with that, was I the last one? Oh, no, you are.
I always, I always reserve the last, but yeah, great. I, I, I'm supportive of discussions of housing and trying to get. To a rapid action recovery planning process going as quickly as possible and getting a contractor on board for the Bio-Modernization Grants. If even to do a two-phase project for some interim zoning and, and then a longer term project. But I think it'd be best if they started with, I'm going back to other agenda items, but an assessment of. Of a potential constraints that they could bring back to us and as part of that conversation. But I think it really behooves us to get the right experts around the table, including river science, economic developers, structural engineers. The community, the broader community and all our nonprofit and private development partners to. To ask what is Barry going to look like to Janice Point in the next five to ten years because it's probably going to be, be, be different. And there's probably not going to be resources for everything we want. So we're going to have to prioritize what's, what's the first option, section, second option, third option. I think infill can be a lot of stuff. Infill can be small scale. Development infill could be a forty unit building, which is kind of the conventional. Financial model for a lot of multi, multifamily housing that's getting built around the United States and, and in Canada. Right now. And, and hopefully we can bring all options on the table and really diversify our approaches so we're not putting all our eggs. In one basket, so to speak. And I just wanted to highlight two things about recovery that weren't mentioned is that the Vermont Realtors Association has some recovery money. For homeowners affected and, and the Red Cross also has discretionary funding. So those are two organizations that if you're looking to, for our website, feel free to reach out to me and I can't. And I can't, can't say enough how impressed I am, having been uh shoulder to shoulder with so many volunteers from all over the state every time I've gone out. People from central Vermont, northwest Vermont, Upper Valley, southern Vermont, even coming up from Brattleboro. From Brattleboro to St. Albans, uh, people coming to Berry, pitching in, and, and doing the work that needs to be done, and it happened because we had a resident-fueled, resident-centered uh volunteer force um led by amazing women who were giving three to six hours a day, almost every single day. Their names have been said by Ellen, but it's Amanda, it's Haley Pero, it's Pam Wilson, it's Becky Weig, it's Ellen Kay. They're showing up. And uh, and they could, they, they, they filled gaps um in the city, and I, I can't thank them enough for for all they did um to, to deepen our bench and broaden, broaden our impact and meet the needs of uh people who were without power, needed water, needed, needed their medicine, refrigerated, any, any requests that came their way. They, they were putting it on a list and they were connecting it with needs. And, and I know it's not just them. We had incredible faith community response. And uh, the Red Cross and the professional responders were there, but um, they really personally sacrificed to, to do so much for the citizens of the city, and I, and I want to thank them, so. And with that, I'll pass. And I know we have an executive session here. We probably want to get out of here before nine.
Second.
There's a motion for findings and a, a second under personnel.
So I would actually like to add contracts in there.
And contracts, the nature of co- the nature of the contract, or no? Okay, well, we can, we can. Um, discuss an executive session.
Professional services contract?
Okay. Professional services contract. Is uh, did the mover and securor agree to the adding contracts to that? Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it. That takes us to a, a motion to enter.
To go into executive session to discuss personnel and contracts.
All right, there's a motion. There's a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. We're going to be going into a breakout room, and we'll be exiting, and uh, I'm sure Dave Delcor has the question, uh, is any action expected? And I don't expect any action in this case. All right.
We invite.
We invite...
All right, is there a motion to exit executive session at hour forty-five?
Oh, so, just, just a question for the council, because I'm not, are you gonna be at the hearing on the fifteenth?
I am.
Okay, I was at...
Well, at the hearing, I'm gonna do a walk-in tour.
Okay.
I'm not sure about...
Sorry, point of order, we're technically still in executive session, so I'll make the motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, cool, great.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
What's the thing on the sixteenth?
It's the fifteenth. There's a joint hearing of the Senate, or at least of the Senate Economic Development, Housing and General Affairs Committee, potentially a House committee, just talking about recovery legislation. And so they're gonna come to bury it, well, the schedule's still in flux, but I think they're gonna do a walk-in tour in the north end around nine-thirty.
Can you give us a heads up?
Yeah, yeah.
That would be good.
Because I'd really like to be there.
I asked today if it's, if it's okay to invite all of council, so. Um...